Good evening. Welcome to the monthly, or the bi-monthly meeting of Mayor and Council of the City of Westminster. We'll begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Everyone will please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. All right, well, start with the approval of the minutes of the Mayor and Common Council Meeting of April 14th, 2020. You all received a copy of the minutes in your packet. And for anybody who is joining us by video, the complete council packet is available online at the city's website. Please feel free to take a look and download that and follow along with us with the agenda and all the information provided to the council. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Been a motion by Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have a number of presentations to start off with, and then we'll have some presentations. So, Mr. Mayor, would you like to begin with the proclamations?
Sure will. We have a few of these today, so bear with me. The first one is the mayoral proclamation for the National Preservation Month, May 2020. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And everyone has places that are important to them, places they care about, places that matter. This Place Matters is a national campaign that encourages people to celebrate the places that are meaningful to them and to their communities. It is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, I, Joe Dominic, Mayor of the City of Westminster, do proclaim May 2020 as National Preservation Month in the City of Westminster and call upon the people of Westminster to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance, adopted this 27th day of April 2020. And next, we have a mayoral proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week. There is not a time more fitting for this. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public employees at the federal, state, county, and municipal levels, and the actions of these public employees enhance the quality of life and jurisdictions across the nation. And the City of Westminster is served by many dedicated public employees providing a variety of services to the community, and the services performed by these employees include general administration, housing and code enforcement, human resources, information technology, public safety, public works, and recreation and parks. And the Mayor and Common Council wish to recognize the work performed by city employees and those public employees employed by other levels of government. Now, therefore, I, Joe Dominic, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the Common Council, do hereby proclaim that May 3rd through 9th, 2020, is hereby declared as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the Mayor and Common Council in celebrating the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, adopted this 27th day, April 2020. So if any of you see any of the city or county or state employees out there, make sure that from a very comfortable distance, you say thank you and maybe wave. And the next one is a mayoral proclamation for the National Police Week and Peace Officers' Memorial Day. Whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers now serving in the United States, including the dedicated members of the Westminster Police Department. Whereas, since the first recorded police death in 1791, over 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. And National Police Week, established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And the members of the Westminster Police Department provide a vital public service working to ensure the safety and protection of community members, homes, businesses, and schools. And the Mayor and Common Council wish to publicly salute the service of the officers of the Westminster Police Department. Now, therefore, I, Joe Dominic, Mayor of the City of Westminster, in conjunction with the Common Council, do hereby proclaim May 10th through the 16th, 2020, as National Police Week, and May 15th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the City of Westminster. And be it further proclaimed that all residents are encouraged to join the Mayor and Common Council in commemorating this observance by thanking the members of the Westminster Police Department, past and present, for the dedicated service to the Westminster community and for their efforts in keeping our community safe, adopted this 27th day of April 2020. Thank you, Mr. President. That's it for our proclamations. You're on mute, bud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we'll move on to the, first of all, presentations. When the City of Westminster created its fiber network, we also helped create an organization to help us figure out what to do with it in many senses, the Mid-Atlantic Gigabit Innovation Collaboratory, MAGIC, as it's more popularly known. The city makes an annual contribution to its operating costs every year, and so we receive a quarterly report on their activities. And with us tonight is Mr. Graham Dodge, the Executive Director of MAGIC, and we will hear that presentation with him in now. Mr. Dodge, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. Let me get my screen up here. So yes, hi, I'm Graham Dodge. I'm the Executive Director of MAGIC, here to present our third quarter progress report for January to March fiscal year 2020. I'd like to start with a recap of what I identified back in September as the problems our city and the Main Street community faces, and what role MAGIC and fiber play in overcoming these challenges. First of all, Main Street, America, historically speaking, is in disrepair. There's net negative job growth. Therefore, there's no real baseline data to then inform decision-making. We see residents commuting 60 to 90 minutes away Monday through Friday, so those dollars are spent in other communities where the employers are. We then see less visits from non-residents, which leads to a decline in the economic development of Main Street. And these losses lead to addiction, crime, truancy, and poor health outcomes. And of course, this puts us at even greater risk in periods of recession and as we're seeing with COVID-19 pandemics. So the solution to this is what I call Silicon Main Street. And this is MAGIC's vision for a technology-driven economic development plan for the City of Westminster, meant to reverse the flow of commuters, retain Generation Z in terms of the local workforce, and lead to a net positive job growth over time. We want to create a sandbox infrastructure for technology and innovation to flourish. This, I believe, will make us more resilient to recessions and future pandemics and give a state-level recognition and beyond as we become noted as a community that's growing despite elements of adversity. So in my initial presentation of Silicon Main Street to City Council, I mentioned the need for what I called magical spaces to address transportation challenges, bringing coworking to Main Street, and to make free city Wi-Fi hotspots. Since then, a lot of other stakeholders have emerged to bring these ideas to reality, including the idea of bringing autonomous infrastructure to Westminster using a company like Local Motors and autonomous shuttles known as Ollie that MAGIC has vetted. McDaniel students have applied for a grant that would allow them to afford a charging station for one of these vehicles at McDaniel. And a local business called Dynamic Dimensions Technology, or DDT, has developed a five-phase plan to actually roll out a fully autonomous infrastructure for the city. We also have seen a co-garage emerge on Main Street. So MAGIC has been working with Atlas Premier Realty to bring their vision of coworking to life here on Main Street. So have others in the community, Gage Digital Media, that previous picture I had up there with Mayor Joe, was him inside of this facility with Maryland IT Solutions. And Ting have all helped bring resources together to help CoGarage be off the ground, and they're now accepting memberships. I'm working on developing an MBIA, which is Maryland Business Innovation Association membership, that would allow us to then get Tedco grant funding to support startups that want to get space in this facility. And then overall, it would allow us to, it would be a space for us to, for MAGIC to rent desks and have startup incubation and acceleration. And then during COVID-19, the city and Ting got together and made the park and Wi-Fi hotspot in the Conway lot, which is really exciting. So that's a great first step in terms of getting a hotspot, free city Wi-Fi hotspot for the general public to use. And then we've got Exploration Commons coming next year as well, which is exciting, and that'll afford more opportunities for people to engage with Main Street, engage with Ting Fiber, and get online. I also want to take a moment to highlight how certain companies have decided to build their businesses here in Westminster already because of our gigabit fiber infrastructure and our evolving startup community. You might recognize some of these names, and some of them might be new to you. Several are already engaged directly with MAGIC. We've even designed logos for two of them. But this is just a preamble to what the Silicon Main Street future really could hold for the city. So how does this happen? Well, to borrow from our agrarian roots, it starts with good soil. And that is low cost of living, high quality of life, the presence of government contractors and federal dollars being spent locally, institutions of higher learning who are co-invested in the workforce development here in Westminster. And then planting seeds, so to speak, and we can see that as infrastructure improvements like fiber, like potentially the autonomous infrastructure. Startup investing, bringing startup companies and supporting startup companies here in Westminster. Offering employer tax incentives, relocation grants, which we've discussed before, and strategic zoning like the opportunity zone, and how can we leverage these opportunities? So MAGIC's mission is still the same, though. It's to build a tech ecosystem that creates and nurtures talent, entrepreneurship, and tech businesses, elevating Westminster to be the Mid-Atlantic region. And until Silicon Main Street is sort of adopted as a formal plan, it will remain MAGIC's vision for Westminster to be the next technology hub, to emerge in the United States, following in the footsteps of other great communities that had similar sort of good soil ingredients to start, like Mountain View, California, Boulder, Colorado, and Austin, Texas. And I encourage everyone to use the hashtag SiliconMainStreet to kind of keep that vision going, any social media posts about Westminster and economic development here in the city. So next, I want to dive into the quarterly KPIs that we track with the city. In the third quarter, for a number of sponsors participating in special events, we had one special event, that was our hackathon at the Carroll Community College. We had eight sponsors for that. We had two other events canceled, by the way, because of COVID-19, so that's why it's not a larger number. That one event got us $7,875 in sponsor revenue. We've had four grant applications submitted this past quarter. We resubmitted for a Calhoun Foundation grant, we submitted for a Trump Power Foundation grant, resubmitted for a Walmart Community Grant, and have submitted for USDA Rural Business Development Grant. The number of volunteers from venture capitalists, startups, and tech companies, we had maybe a record-breaking number of 17. So a lot of that comes from the hackathon. It's one of our big events where we engage judges and volunteers, people to come teach kids about app development and marketing, that sort of thing. And then we also have our Healthy Smart Home Project, which also attracts technologists who volunteer on that. Jobs placed or facilitated within the City of Westminster, we contributed three this past quarter. We had two related to developing the virtual programs for MAGIC, and then one for hiring an instructor for our own game development course. Jobs placed outside the city, zero. Number of conferences and events attended or hosted, that was three. I think a handful of those were virtual. Number of conferences, business attended, which Westminster Fiber Network was promoted, that was one, that was our hackathon, that was our own event, of course. And then we had coverage in the local news and regional news as a result of hackathon and as a result of our new Board of Directors who started this past quarter. So despite COVID-19, we still accomplished a lot this past quarter. Our MAGIC hackathon attracted over 150 attendees, including several non-residents from as far as Charles and the Anorim County, which is great. We were awarded the Maryland Center for Computing Education Grant, this $2,500 grant that will support a new Capture the Flag program for teachers to educate teachers about cybersecurity and how to host their own classroom competitions. We've been working closely with the Creer and Tech Center to facilitate that grant, that programming. And we launched our Intro to Game Development class. This is our first paid course, and it was the one that we were in the middle of when COVID-19 happened, and we were able to successfully move that to 100% virtual program via Zoom. And that also meant creating a laptop lending program where we loaned highly provisioned laptops capable of game development to families that didn't have anything like that at home, so they could still stay on the course. And we also offered scholarships to families that couldn't afford the registration fee. And all of our students who started off in that course, which originated at Ventress Middle School, in terms of we had it as a classroom setting there, they all have stayed on since, and we're really excited to show you guys some of the games that they've been developing. So now, because of COVID-19, we have seen some negative impacts. We had to cancel our Ninth Capture the Flag event, which was planned on April 18th. That was probably a $5,000 loss in terms of sponsor revenue for Q4. Our CTF for Teachers program I just mentioned, we actually have three events planned that would have drawn also some revenue for us, about $1,000 loss for Q4. Our big cybersecurity conference called Business Tris 2020 was planned for May 8th at the Carroll Community College. This was drawing speakers from Google, NSA. It would have been a pretty big event for us and for the community college, but that's been rescheduled for October 16th, probably at least a $10,000 loss for MAGIC in terms of lost revenue. We had two job placements we were working on within the City of Westminster. Both of those were delayed in terms of the interview process for those jobs. Our hackathon-winning team was in the process of being, they're called Student Pulse, they're in the process of being introduced to professional contacts through MAGIC to actually get their business off the ground. That's been delayed. We had a donor dinner event that's now tentative, and then our next big event called Good Game or GGfest.org, Healthy Gaming Festival, which was planned at McDaniel, their new student center in September. That's now tentative, of course, because there's so much hinging on what happens, not only with us and COVID-19, but also with McDaniel. So what's ahead for next quarter? Well, we are going to be launching more virtual programs. So we're not stuck with just doing things in person, as evidenced by our Intro to Game Development course being successfully launched virtually. We want to launch a new accelerator program, a virtual accelerator program, as a 45-day sort of incubation acceleration program for startups. We are working on circling angel investors now to build an angel syndicate to invest in those companies. We are going to launch our first virtual CTF, which is actually going to happen on May 16th. Registration opens on May 11th for that. That should be a lot of fun for our cyber club and other kids who've engaged with our CTF program before. We want to expand our paid course offerings as well, offering courses in app development, JavaScript, that sort of thing. And then we'll be getting grant notifications, whether or not we have been awarded any additional funding for those grants I mentioned before. So as all I'd like to end on my, what I call my bag of tricks as the executive magician here, what do I need or what do I have in my bag to help me do my job effectively? And what would be nice to have especially, some things I still would love to be able to say that we have here in Westminster would be these remote working tax credits. I actually have an article that's going to come out in the Carroll County Times sort of detailing what this is about and what other cities are doing in this regard. Same with relocation grants. I'd like to see more cross-promotion with the city, maybe a link on the city website, cross-promotion of our events together. We are doing that with the county in terms of being able to post news to the county website, for example. Love to work with the city to develop baseline data analysis, what do we need to be looking at to sort of measure our success moving forward. We are still working on gathering funding for startups. We're still working on bringing Kauffman Foundation programs here to the city. We have our $1 million Perks program, where we can offer free hosting to startup companies that engage with us. We have our Tech Jobs Board. Of course, we have these great opportunity zones, facade grants, there's lots of opportunities for businesses who want to move to Westminster and open their business here. And then, of course, as I mentioned, we have some great cross-promotion with the county. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. We appreciate your report, and I'd be glad to see if anybody has any questions. I think Mr. Yingling was jumping in, so please go ahead, Mr. Yingling.
Graham, thanks for the information. That's fantastic. I understand things have probably been really rough for the organization going remote like that. Obviously, you can see that based on your events that had to be postponed and the revenue. And also, it's good to hear that you're applying for the grants. What is the dollar amount in that grant pipeline? I'm just curious.
Well, we're looking at, I guess, for the next year, it would be a total amount of about 90,000, 90, 90 some odd and change for the next year.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Mr. President.
Thank you, yes. Please go ahead.
Mr. President, Graham, I wanted to ask you one or two quick questions. You mentioned in your presentation that you guys are maintaining the, what was the term you're using that you'd like to see us adopt? I don't have the presentation in front of me, but there was a term that you were using, Gig Main Street?
Silicon Main Street.
What was it?
The Silicon Main Street.
Silicon Main Street, that's it, thank you. So what are you, are you looking for something from us related to that?
Yeah, sort of, I'd like to be able to take it from just a vision that really we have within MAGIC to actually make an executable economic development plan with metrics and goals that we're tracking over time. And I see it as really encompassing the efforts of fiber and what the opportunity zone has in store for companies here, and that's not really being promoted. I don't know if there is somebody at the city that promotes the opportunity zone, for example. And then, how can we leverage the Westminster Town Center Corporation? Baltimore has the Baltimore Development Corporation, and that's very active in investing in startups and creating programming for startups. How can MAGIC in the city leverage that entity as well to ultimately provide an ROI back to the city, actually? So yes, that's what I would hope to accomplish, is to get something that says that, yes, the Silicon Main Street, or whatever it ends up being called, is an economic development plan that the city and MAGIC and our stakeholders are executing on.
So I know we have an individual, I believe it's Sandy Anderson, who goes around and has a relationship with businesses. I know I get, as a business owner in town, I get communications occasionally related to various things that are put out from her, I guess it falls under our zoning department, sort of. Ms. Matthews, is Sandy under planning and zoning?
Yes, that's correct. She worked for Mr. Depot.
So I mean, I know she communicates out to the business owners within the community. I don't know if you have any relationship with her at all or have ever talked or met with her, but I would certainly think that that's something, at least in the right direction of maybe what you're talking about. You know, I think it's a neat idea. I don't know much about it, but it sounds cool, and I like some of the things you're talking about in terms of what you want to do. The other thing, too, that I wanted to touch on is there were a couple of things that you had on that one chart that shows that you haven't gotten to where you want to get to yet. One of them, of course, was cross-promotion with the city, disappointed that we're not doing it and the county is. I hope we can do better there. I'm not sure I have the answer of how we do that, because I don't really have much to do with our web presence or any of that, but I certainly would think that getting a link on our site, on our website, or having some type of connection there doesn't seem like it would probably be that challenging, but then again, it's easy for me to say that because I don't really know what it requires to do that or what it takes. But I guess I'm speaking to Ms. Matthews and maybe whoever else is involved in that. It'd be great if we could make that happen. I'm not sure what my colleagues feel about that, but again, if the county, if you've got a little green dot next to the county and a red dot next to the city, and we're the ones who helped you get creative and funding you, I would think we'd want to do what we can to help promote some of the things that you're doing. So I guess that's my comments, Mr. President.
Mr. President. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Mr. Mayor.
All right, so a few things. One, I'll kind of pick up where Councilman Cavaci left off, maybe answer you some questions there. So I've been, and I'll talk about this a little bit in my mayor comments, but we are currently working on a website redesign. And among other priorities in how we are interfacing with the public, one of the things that we're going to focus on, on the homepage above the fold, for those of you who know what that means, we're going to be promoting fiber more, because fiber's not really being promoted on the website. It's kind of a link that takes you to explanations that were relevant back when we were building the backbone, back when things were first started, things that three, four years ago went up, but it's not promoting fiber in a way that's going to get people to initially be educated on what's available and purchase it. And I think that this is probably a good opportunity to expand on promoting some of the activities that MAGIC and other organizations in the community are doing. Over the past couple of weeks, I've had calls with the website vendor that we're working with that does municipal websites and government websites, and then our department heads, and Ting and some other people. After this, let's schedule a call and see how we can maybe incorporate that with the website in some way. But I think this goes back to a long-term discussion that we've had since I've been here, which is that there are positions that we would all like to have. And I think Sandy's the Main Street manager in planning and zoning, and I think traditionally that position has largely been focused on retail and restaurants. I mean, before I came in, I think the group that we had, the small business group, was even called Restaurant Tours and Retail, Retail and Restaurant Tours Group. So I think that's just part of the city shift to do it with the new economy and our new goals. And it's also part of, it's a symptom of being a historic city that's been around longer than the Constitution of the United States, but also is trying to be on the cusp of technology and have a gigabit fiber network. But let's talk about that, and we can figure out some ways to do that. One thing I would like to address, and I would like to just point out that I know that was meant harmlessly and was probably done totally unintentionally, but so there was a picture up on your presentation at the beginning of it, myself, a couple of my business partners, and my two companies' logos. I would just like to clarify what that was. I don't want people to get the wrong idea. So that is a workspace, and I don't really like to talk about this during council meetings, but I feel like if my logo is being put up there, I need to say something. That was a non-related to the city, non-related to MAGIC in any way, that's a coworking space in the old city garage, and two friends of mine own it. They own Atlas Premier Realty. They also, they bought that as They also, they bought that as a co-working space. You know, my company's donated gigabit fiber and managed Wi-Fi for them just to help startups get started in Westminster, totally outside of anything magic related. I believe the reason it was up there is because MAGIC has also worked out or working out a deal with them to partially manage it and get some free office space. But I just wanted to say that that was nothing directly related to MAGIC or the city in any way. And, and just out of courtesy, I ask that from now on during, during, and I, I know that, you know, we've done some things with MAGIC in terms of speaking at events and some things like that, too, but I would, I would strongly prefer our companies' logos and promotion not be presented during city, city meetings. Just, I don't want any confusion to be out there, and I certainly don't want to get any benefit from my position as mayor. So I just, I'm going to ask that, and, and I'd just like to explain that for a second so that there's, there's clarification on that matter. In terms of, I guess, you know, Councilman Yingling asked about the, the grant pipeline, and you said this year. I imagine that you're applying for grants this year, but also further out. Is that, when you said this year, does that imply that future years that you have a larger or, or different existing pipeline for grants?
Right, well, yeah, so that number, that, you know, 90 some odd thousand and change would be for this coming fiscal year. So we would find out around June, July, if we've won any of those award, have been awarded any of those grants, and then those would be applied to our budget for the following fiscal year. Potentially, one of them could be a year-over-year, like a multi-year grant, but the rest, most of them are not, and, and one of them still might just be a single-year grant. So we have to sort of, you know, hunt for each of the, you know, for these opportunities year-over-year.
And I, I know that depending on when the grant, the cycle is, whether it's by calendar year or by fiscal year, which is coming up, I just wanted to see what the plan was. My hope was that you say, well, it's 90,000 for 2021, but it's a million for 2022. But, you know, I just wanted to clarify, because you, you sounded like you made a clarification. I just wanted to see kind of, you know, what that meant. But obviously, we're, we're all rooting for you to get, to get, to get grants, and there's certainly grants out there for this kind of stuff, whether or not, you know, totally qualifies, but I, I know that there are grants out there for this. And at least, and hopefully, due to the current situation, pandemic, those don't, don't dry up. But thank you, Mr. President, that's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Dodge?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to echo the remarks of Councilman Kavachi and the mayor. I think the, I think we need to promote fiber a lot more than we have in the past. I think we have a lot of opportunities with that. I really like the branding of Silicon Main Street. I really like that idea a lot. I think that's a perfect niche. Small communities like Westminster need to find a niche. You'll read that over and over again in a lot of the economic development material that we have an opportunity to read. I'm really excited about the website redesign. I'm really excited about examples like the city garage, and I, I heard what the mayor said, but I'm just as happy that you called that to our attention because that's exactly what we're looking for, that service industry, that, that, that niche, that, 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 that digital niche that is a perfect fit for Westminster, where it is that we're located. I think it was an excellent report, and I really appreciate it. Mr. President, can we incorporate his report by reference in the minutes, please?
We certainly can, and so ordered. Mr., if you finish, Mr. Yingling has to.
Yeah, actually, what I heard from Graham in some of the post-discussion was talking about, what I'm hearing is working with the city to make a more formal strategy in how that we can, you know, attract some of these businesses in terms of economic development and really start to see a return on investment. Is that, would you say that's, that's right, Graham?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay, great. Well, that's great. I, I love that. So as Chair of the Economic Development Committee, I'd be happy to set a meeting that we can talk more about that. I know the mayor's on it, and then President Pecorero is on it. You know, if you're up to that, why don't we make that the first step?
That would be great, yep. I'm totally up for that.
All right, we will do that.
All right, very good. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dodge. Thank you very much for taking the time to join us tonight for that very interesting presentation. We always enjoy having you. Good luck, and we will look forward to talking with you again soon. Thank you. All right, our next presentation is on the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. And for that, we'll turn to our city administrator to lead that, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, just give me a minute to please bring up the screen.
Good.
Is that up and running?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much, just wanted to be sure. The budget being presented tonight represents countless hours of work on the part of the city's management team, and I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of them for their contributions. I would also like to acknowledge the hard work, in particular of Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Tammy Palmer, who has been my right-hand person throughout the budget's development, as well as our Director of Human Resources, Darlene Childs, who played an instrumental role in finalizing the Phase Three implementation plan for the Comp and Class Study. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to express my gratitude to Mayor Dominic and the member of the Common Council's Finance Committee, which would be Council President Pecorero and Councilmember Yingling. These three individuals devoted considerable time to working with Ms. Palmer and myself to craft the FY 2021 budget proposal, and their guidance and direction were instrumental in the budget's development. To start, I'd like to just take a few minutes and sort of talk about some of the things that shaped the FY 2021 budget proposal, which I'm referring to as budget drivers. The Economic Development Committee, very early on in our deliberations, provided direction to staff that there would be no change in any of the city's property tax rates. I did want to note that we will be seeing increased revenues due to higher assessed values despite there being no change in tax rates. The water and sewer rates that will go into effect July 1st were those that were adopted in May 2018, and I'll be touching on that a little bit later in my presentation. And certainly, this budget was shaped and then reshaped by the COVID-19 pandemic. As members of the Finance Committee are well aware, our schedule this year is a little bit behind. We had basically a pretty solid budget proposal in place, and then the full economic fallout of the pandemic hit, and that led to us going back and reevaluating some of our prior assumptions and running those assumptions by the Finance Committee. We will, in FY 2021, subject to the mayor and common council's approval, of course, be continuing our implementation of the Comp and Class Study results. And lastly, one of the other factors that is shaping some aspects of the budget is that we will have insufficient fiber fund revenues to cover our debt service costs in FY 2021. We will be talking about the budget in basically five, what we refer to as funds, and these are accounting activities of how the city records its various operational and financial matters. Those would be the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Sewer Fund, the Fiber Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. Kind of a high-level picture of the budget, combined revenues, all funds, is budgeted currently at $62.2 million. We have combined expenditures of $65.5 million, and the balance or the variance of $3.3 million will be made up of reserve allocations from multiple funds. We are a service industry, so a major component of our operating cost as a local government, our personnel cost. Wanted to highlight a few things in that regard. As proposed, we would have two aspects of employee wage adjustments in FY 2021, a 2% across-the-board adjustment for all eligible staff, which has an associated cost of $160,000, and the Phase Three Comp and Class Study implementation with an associated cost of $78,000. For anyone who is watching and isn't familiar with our Comp and Class Study, this was an assessment undertaken in our fiscal year 2018 that involved reviewing our, then current salary and benefit structure and making adjustments as necessary to make sure that we could attract and retain a quality workforce. That new salary structure went into effect as of July 1st, 2018, and we are implementing the study results in three phases. And if approved by the mayor and common council, FY 2021 would mark the final year of that process. We do have our final renewal rate for our employee health insurance, and we will be seeing a 9.9% increase in employee health insurance cost. We will also see increases in our MSRA rates, and those refers to the state retirement system. For our non-sworn staff who are eligible to participate, our contribution rate will go from 9.38% of salary to 10.24%. Leops is the state plan for sworn police staffing, and our contribution rates will also go up in that area from 32.22% of salary to 34.93%. As you all may recall, especially for, I know that Councilmember Dayhoff and Councilmember Gilbert were not part of the council that adopted the FY 2020 budget, so this may be new to them, but the FY 2020 budget included a 45th sworn officer, what we refer to as an over-hire position. This was in anticipation of some known retirements that were going to happen during the current fiscal year. The budget proposal that is before you this evening would make that 45th sworn officer position permanent, and because it is an existing position in the budget, there is no budgetary impact from one year to the next. The budget proposal also recognizes the creation of the Special Projects Manager position, which the mayor and common council authorized earlier in the fiscal year. The cost of that position will be allocated across the general water and sewer funds, just like all the positions in my immediate department are. We are also proposing the addition of one equipment operator position for the street department. This would be 100% accounted for in the general fund if approved by the mayor and common We are also proposing the addition of one equipment operator for the utility maintenance department. As you all may recall, once the fiber network was completed, we had some discussion about how to handle both fiber installations and maintenance of the network, and after assessing the contractual versus the cost of doing that with our own staff, the decision was to bring that work in-house. We started rather slowly, I would note against Mr. Glass's initial recommendation, and decided to sort of see how things ramped up. So we initially added two employees in utility maintenance associated with the fiber network, and that has simply proved insufficient. So that is why we are proposing the addition of another equipment operator, and that position's cost would be allocated across water, sewer, and fiber, just recognizing that Mr. Zekman, our Superintendent for Utility Maintenance, does a wonderful job of cross-training his folks, and they're actually used in numerous operational areas as he moves people around. And lastly, we are proposing the addition of a mechanic, which would be 100% accounted for in the water fund. Moving on, and just providing sort of a brief overview of our general fund, for anyone who is watching who isn't familiar with the term general fund, this accounts for the day-to-day operational activities of the city, including such activities as planning, police protection, snow removal, and general administration. Approximately 26% of the city's proposed spending in FY 2021 is accounted for in the general fund. Majority of the funding, or close to the majority for the funding for the general fund, does come from real property tax revenue, representing about 49% of fund revenues. Other revenue sources in the general fund include personal property and utility taxes, income tax receipts, a payment we received from Carroll County for services they would otherwise provide if the city didn't exist, that's referred to as the county-town agreement, and then there are charges for service such as participating in some of our recreation programs. As I mentioned in my opening comments of this presentation, this budget process has been particularly challenging, trying to assess how long the shutdown due to COVID-19 will continue, what the economic fallout of that is going to be. I think some of that we've already seen, but I think the bigger question is how long does it take to recover from that economic fallout? I think this is a struggle that everyone at all levels of government is currently trying to assess at this point in time. Ms. Palmer and I basically went back and looked at some of the revenue sources that in particular, we believe may be impacted, both in the short term and perhaps in the longer term, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and made the decision to scale back our initial budget projections in certain revenue sources. They include a decline of approximately 20% in income tax receipts based on the current level of unemployment throughout the state of Maryland and across the country. Other revenue categories expected to decline are business personal property taxes, amusement and admission taxes, and traders license fees. Another fairly significant reduction from one fiscal year to another that we've made is a reduction in our investment income. Anyone who tracks what is going on with the rate cuts by the Fed knows that currently you can barely invest your money for anything. It's a great time to get a mortgage, but it's a lousy time to be a government trying to invest your money. So we have scaled back our initial projections in investment income. Once again, a major driver of our personnel cost in the general fund, our personnel-related, representing 48% of fund expenditures. For the most part, I would characterize the FY 2021 budget as being a fairly status quo budget, continuing the current level of services that the city provides to the community. A couple items that I did want to call out for the mayor and common council are in the Community Planning and Development Department operating budget. One of our strategic planning goals has been to make certain revisions to our zoning code. As you all are aware, we went through a transition in the director of that department during the fiscal year, which has put that project behind. So we do have funding currently budgeted in FY 2020, but that project could not come to fruition under Mr. Depot's leadership. We do expect to proceed with that project in FY 2021. We also have included funding in Mr. Depot's budget for the city's contract with Partners for Economic Solutions. They are the consulting firm that we hire to assist us with the Stockdale property redevelopment. We also have continued funding to two outside agencies. The city has provided funding to these two entities for many, many years. One would be the Westminster Volunteer Fire Department, which is, we have budgeted a grant to the fire department in the amount of $250,000, and then we provide a small nominal grant to the Westminster Municipal Band in the amount of $5,000. One of the topics that we discussed during the last year's budget process and that you, the group is scheduled to discuss again during this budget process, is the operating deficit for the Westminster Family Center. The chart is, that is up on your screen, shows the operating deficit over the past six years, if I'm doing my math correctly. One thing of note for the current year fiscal year 2020, this data was as of April 1st, as mayor and common council are aware, we have closed our family fitness center gym, just like other gyms have been ordered to close across the state. We actually closed ours a few days earlier at Mayor Dominic's urging for public health reasons. At this juncture in time, we are not collecting membership fees since no one can access services. We do, we are still carrying the expense of the staff, and Ms. Mollendorf, who is the Assistant Director who is on this call, has found creative ways to try to leverage the talents of those staff members assigned to the family center during the pandemic. The projected operating deficit for the Family Fitness Center in FY 2021 is about $209,000. At this time, the capital improvement program includes $90,000 in capital projects associated specifically with the fitness center. They would be the replacement of certain cardio equipment at a cost of $15,000, and the renovation of a shower room at a cost of $75,000. One item of note is that the majority of the members at the fitness center are in fact non-city residents. I would note before moving on from this slide that in consultation with the Finance Committee, the mayor and common council are scheduled to the mayor and common council are scheduled to discuss this issue in more detail at your budget work session scheduled for May 4. Moving on to the water fund, the water fund is one of the city's three enterprise funds. Enterprise funds operate and account for their transactions in a manner similar to private business, and by policy they are to be self-supporting with their fees and charges covering operating costs, the cost of any capital projects, and debt service costs. In May of 2018, the mayor and common council adopted a multi-year rate structure for both water and sewer, so no action is, needs to be taken by the mayor and common council relative to water rates for FY 2021. I would note that the previously approved rate increase was 3.5% for water. One of the issues that we, we being Ms. Palmer and I, discussed with the members of the finance committee is we are seeing a trend of reduced consumption by some of the city's largest water users. We are going to continue to monitor that, share that information with the finance committee. If that trend does continue, then some reevaluation of the current rate structure may be needed. In FY 2021, we are proposing a reserve allocation of just over $300,000. For the most part, this represents a reappropriation of funding in FY 2020 that based on current trends, we do not anticipate being expended. And I bring that up just to share with you that I don't think this reserve allocation is material to the bottom line, financial integrity of the water fund. A couple of projects to be funded out of the water fund as proposed in FY 2021. One is the Route 27 Water Main Project at a cost of $325,000. We anticipate continued work on the city's water reuse initiative in the coming fiscal year, and $250,000 has been budgeted for that work. And then continued work on building our GIS system, $100,000 has been set aside in the water fund for GIS engineering work with building the layers. Moving on to the sewer fund, this is also an enterprise fund, which once again accounts for its transactions in a manner similar to private businesses, similar to water. Rate structures were established in May 2018, and the scheduled rate increase for the sewer fund is 5% as of July 1st of 2020. Our sewer charges are based on someone's water consumption, so we are also seeing reduced consumption by our large users on the sewer side, and we'll be watching that as well. We also are proposing a reserve allocation from the sewer fund of about $270,000, similar to water. This amount is essentially a reappropriation of FY 2020 unspent funds. Highlighting certain projects in the sewer fund, certainly the largest by far, is the E&amp;R BioSalads Project, which was continuing to be under construction. That represents $22.4 million of sewer fund expenditures. Part of that project includes an upgrade to the county septic facility at a cost of $1.74 million. I would note the cost of the septic facility upgrade is being borne 100% by Carroll County. We have included in the budget $1.6 million for continued work on mitigating inflow and infiltration, often referred to as INI. $300,000 for a replacement of clarifier feedgate and drive, and similar to the water side, $100,000 for GIS engineering work. With regard to the fiber fund, this is the last of the three enterprise funds that I'll be talking about during this presentation. While the water and sewer funds are self-sustaining, the fiber fund is not self-supporting. In FY 2021, we anticipate a drawdown from the state loan of about $503,000. As I mentioned very early on, as one of the budget drivers, fiber revenues will be insufficient to cover debt service in FY 2021. I would note that state loan proceeds cannot be used for debt service, so an operating transfer from the general fund of about $203,000 will be required in FY 21 to cover the city's debt service costs. And the proposed budget also includes continued grant funding to MAGIC in the amount of $80,000. I did want to note, both for the benefit of the mayor and common council, and the finance committee is aware of this because we worked with them on the schedule, but for the other members of the elected body, we will be reviewing the fiber fund in more detail, as well as the funding to MAGIC at your work session this coming Thursday on April 30. Switching to the capital projects fund, this fund accounts for the city's non-enterprise or non-utility capital expenditures. Funding sources in FY 21 include a portion of the city's real property tax revenues, highway user funding, which comes from the state, special benefit assessment fees, which are assessed on new development in the city, grant funding that the city has already obtained, a reserve allocation of just about $710,000, and a general fund transfer of $1.98 million. Couple comments about the reserve allocation and the general fund transfer. The reserve allocation of approximately $710,000 is a combination of both re-appropriated monies for projects not completed in the current fiscal year, as well as the use of accumulated benefit assessment funds for the purchase of equipment to be used by the street department in servicing new developments in the city. The $1.9 million transfer from the general fund basically represents the ongoing construction of the 45 West Main Street renovation project, and then the balance of it, which is fairly small, represents the appropriation of forfeiture funds for the installation of cameras in downtown Westminster, as well as the purchase of an additional license plate reader. One thing I wanted to call to the mayor and common council's attention is for, we do have included in the capital improvement program anticipated improvements to our pool. The proposed budget assumes that any work related to any pool improvements will be bond financed. The extent of any improvements to the Westminster Municipal Pool, as well as the funding mechanism to pay for any debt service associated with bonding, will be the topic of your upcoming budget work session on May 4. Just to highlight a few projects, as I wrap up this presentation, as I've noted, we have included in the capital improvement program some anticipated improvements to our pool. We have funding for continued construction of the 45 West Main Street renovation project, which is anticipated to be completed during fiscal year 2021. We have funding for road paving, routine replacement of vehicles and equipment, as well as debt service. Here's the budget calendar for anyone watching in the community and who would like the opportunity to educate themselves on the city's budget, as well as potentially offer comments on the proposed budget. We will be holding a special mayor and common council meeting at 7:00 PM this coming Thursday, April 30. In conjunction with that budget work session, we will be holding the first of two public hearings. We will be holding another special mayor and common council meeting on May 4, which is a Monday, at 5:30 PM, and I do want to call out that time since it's a little different than our normal meeting time. In conjunction with the mayor and common council's budget work session, we will be holding the, as currently stands, the final public hearing on the proposed budget for FY 2021. And then subject to mayor and common council's direction, of course, we are scheduled to adopt the budget ordinance on May 11th at your regular meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM. So I thank the mayor and common council for their time. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Matthews. You've heard the presentation. As Ms. Matthews noted, we will be having two work sessions on the budget, and there'll be lots of opportunities at that time to go into detail on some of these issues, as well as discussing some of the major issues that we will have highlighted for those two work sessions. Is there anything that anybody wishes to ask right now that you don't want to save for one of those two meetings? We've got lots of the agenda, so we can move on if nobody has anything else. All right, hearing nothing. Ms. Matthews, thank you very much for that presentation, and we will go into greater detail at the two budget workshops, which again will be streamed live, and we will look forward to comments from the public as well. At this time, it's time for a public hearing on the city's constant yield tax rate. Public hearings in the city of Westminster are presided over by the mayor, so I will turn the virtual gavel over to the mayor to lead the public hearing. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that maybe we need to have gavel sent to our homes for this, but for today, I'll just use my knuckles on the table. But I will begin the public hearing here for the constant yield rate, or yield tax rate. Ms. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most of you know, annually, we have a public hearing for the constant yield tax. This is where the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation determines what the tax rate should be if you wanted to raise the same amount of revenue as you did in the previous year. The constant yield tax rate, as determined by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation this year, is .5425 for 100 dollars of assessed real property. The budget that Ms. Matthews just presented to you anticipates keeping the city's property tax rate at .56 for 100 of assessed value. That would mean that we would generate, according to the Department of Assessments and Taxation, an additional $329,223 of tax revenue. Were required by state law to advertise this as a tax increase. We have done so. That advertisement appeared in the April 14th edition of the Carroll County Times. That is all I have for this presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. So just to clarify, I know that we're required by law to, you know, call this a tax increase, but the rate stays the same. The reason that the amount's increased is simply because property values have increased, correct, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, there is growth, and the assessment values have increased.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Anyone from the council have any questions for Ms. Palmer?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. President?
So, you know, it dawned on me, and I don't know this has happened since I've been in office, but would we be required to call it a tax reduction if the property values actually went down in the city at any time and then advertise that, like we're being required to do this now? Sort of a rhetorical question, but I'd just be curious to know if we would be required to do that or not. I know you don't know the answer, Mr. Mayor.
Well, actually, I think I can answer that. Councilmember Cavaci, I think, as many of you may painfully recall back in the late 2000s, you know, there were a number of jurisdictions, particularly, you know, outer ring suburbs, who saw a drastic reduction and in fact a de-escalation in property values. And to answer your question, there was no such requirement to advertise it as a property tax reduction.
Shocking.
I can see you're falling off your chair, Councilmember Cavaci, as we speak.
I fell off mine.
And pardon me for asking this during the meeting, but since this is the first public hearing I've held since we've been working remotely, are we handling public comments any differently than we are, you know, our normal public comments at the end of the meeting, or, you know, citizen comments, or are people just submitting that, and then we'll be responding the same way?
We did indicate in the advertisement that anyone who wished to sort of virtually testify in the public hearing should send their comments to our city clerk, Ms. Vissowski.
Okay, okay. So if anybody has those, please do that. If you need any help with that, you can call the main number for the city, it's posted on our website, or, you know, I'm sure you can find some of her emails on there too, but feel free to reach out if you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make public. You know, in light of that, go ahead and, oh, sorry, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to mention that, you know, for those who would like to comment, we will be posting the city clerk, Ms. Vissowski's email address on the, you know, at the end of the meeting, on the screen, for those who would like to take note of it, and send her an email, or call in and leave her a message. And to that extent, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we leave the record open for the public hearing until what would be appropriate, maybe close business on Friday, if anybody would like to comment on the, on the yield rate.
Okay, we'll leave the record open. That being said, does anybody else have anything they'd like to state or ask? All right, and we will close the public hearing for the constant yield rate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And now we will move on, back to the agenda here, I'm sorry. We'll move on to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar, and I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci, is there a second? Is that a second, Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci, and a second by Mr. Dayhoff to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for the report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Mr. President. So, you know, we know we have a long meeting, so I'll try to keep it quick. I did already mention first that we were, you know, continue to work on the website and city communications, and I think that's an important project, and people might hear me say that, you know, we're just working on the website, and they might not think much of it, but, you know, these days, our website and social media is the number-one way that people communicate with us. A lot more people interact with us there than they do during these meetings, even now that we're, that we're streaming live, you know. So I think it's really important that we, you know, we have a good message, a solid message on our website, and if we're trying to be a tech-forward city, we need to have a website that represents us as such. So I did, I did want people to know just a little bit more about the priorities that we're, well, the things that we're prioritizing on the website redesign, and I certainly welcome feedback from the five of you and certainly staff, but the things that we're going to be prioritizing on the site that haven't necessarily been prioritized is, first of all, the user experience and the user flow. The things that we've found is that, you know, about 90% of web traffic, in terms of activity on the site, page views, is our rec and, you know, rec and parks department. They, you know, people come to the website for a lot of reasons, but when they're there and they stay there, they're looking, they're looking for information on our, on our activities, our strolls, our festivals, they're looking for information on summer camps, the pool. There's some traffic there for the, for the fitness center, and, you know, so there are a lot of programs, that department that's running, and it's very forward-facing, it's very public-facing, and a lot of time spent there. So one of the big changes we're going to have is we're going to have what's called a subheader for Parks and Rec. It's almost going to be like their own website within our website, and that way, once you click on Parks and Rec, it's a lot easier to navigate. We want this to be easy, easy information for people to find. The other things we're going to prioritize is the promotion of fiber. Our site's never really done that, we're going to do that. And then, you know, ease of use. If you want to pay a water bill, or if you want to find out if the trash pickup has changed due to a holiday, it's not easy to find, because if you end up on our contractor's site, their schedule's different than the city Westminster's schedule. So there's always some confusion there, we're going to get rid of that confusion and make those things easy. We want people to get to wherever, whatever information they need, two clicks if possible. So it's going to be a nice, new, beautiful-looking website, and it's going to serve the public a lot better. So next, some of the time that we've been spending since the last meeting, we have had meetings, and we had a public, public works meeting, and I won't talk about this too much, because this is on the next piece of the agenda, about the bulk trash and yard waste pickup, and I think, you know, we'll be discussing some possible changes there, and I think we're all kind of coming together on that. You know, we have two goals, and I think everyone shares in those goals. Number one is the safety of our residents and our staff, and number two is serving our residents, and, you know, we were just trying to figure out a way to be able to do both, and I think, I think we, you know, we have, we made some headway there, so that we can get back to something that's a little, a little more normal, closer to it, without causing any adverse effects. But things will be changing over time, as we know, as we learn more about what's going on, we'll make further adjustments in either direction. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and this is something I've been working with our city administrators- our city administrator, Ms. Bar Matthews, last couple of weeks. And I've talked to a couple of you about it. I haven't really had a chance. We kind of just figured things out today. So I've reached out to a couple of you, not all of you, and I'll do so over the next couple of days to talk about details, is the, what we're going to do about hazard pay. So we have, you know, city staff that, you know, some are working completely remotely. Obviously, we wanted to mitigate spread here, you know, during the pandemic. And we have some, we have some that are, you know, the schedules have changed. There's some that have some administrative leave built in there. And then there are some that are just doing their job as they always have under higher risk. So we're finalizing, or at least my proposed plan, and then all of you can decide whether or not we're going to move forward with it. But my proposed plan, it's going to be a tiered plan, a bonus structure, and I won't go into too much detail until we've had some time to discuss it. But my goal is to propose that plan within the next couple of days with solid numbers and information. And then, you know, obviously, I want feedback from everybody and then we can decide what we're, you know, what we're going to do moving forward. But I get the feeling, without being confirmed from each of you, that we all want to make sure that this is fair and people are taken care of and that when there is additional risk that, you know, some staff signed up for, some didn't, we factored that into how our employees are compensated. So I won't say a whole lot. I want to talk to everyone a little bit more about it and we'll have some solid numbers in the next couple of days. But I did want to mention that that's happening and I will be proposing that in the next, you know, 48 to 72 hours probably. And I do find that my, you know, report from the mayor tends to almost solely be about COVID-19 or COVID-19-related things. So I think that's a good transition into the next part of our meeting, the COVID-19 pandemic update. So thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, something that we've had a lot of conversation around and, you know, both online and offline since, before the last council meeting and since then, is about bulk item and yard waste collection here in the city, which we had to suspend temporarily due to the pandemic. But we've been discussing how we can resume that. And so we have a report from our public works director, Mr. Glass, on his proposal. Mr. Glass? I think you're still muted, Mr. Glass.
Sorry about that. In mid-March, the city modified work schedules of many of its staff and employees in response to the virus pandemic. In most operations or areas of public works, the crews were divided in half, where one crew would work a 40-hour work week and then would be on paid administrative leave for the second week of the bi-weekly pay period. And then the second crew's current work schedule would be the opposite during the flip of that result. Of course, the goal was, of the alternating schedule, was to minimize the potential disruption to the city's ability to provide critical services in the event that one crew would become ill or not even ill, but if they were just in the, under quarantine for the 14 days, then the other crew would hopefully be able to be healthy and available to do work in mission-critical items. Because the street department staffing was cut in half during that, basically, any given week, the amount of work that could be accomplished, of course, was reduced. And in recognition of the same, the decision was made to temporarily suspend the bulk item and yard waste collection services. This suspension impacted curbside collection of all bulk services, but it would include tree branches, brush, metal, yard waste, and large item collections such as furniture and white goods. On April 14th, the mayor and comm council discussed the matter with several members of the elected body, expressing a desire to modify that public work staffing schedule and provide some resumption of service as well. Staff was requested to bring forward a plan. They continue to prioritize employee safety, but yet reduce the amount of paid administrative leave, avoiding overtime costs and to restore some kind of service collection as well. So on April 15th, I met with the street department staff and had them assist the, or assess, I'm sorry, the extent of uncollected items that were still placed curbside. And you'll see it as the attachment to this memo, it's one page back, summarizes the status of the items that were set curbside as of that date. The data reflects the number of households within the city limits that still had items out to be picked up. It's a really fairly small percentage of all households that are eligible for that service. And the vast majority of that were bags of grass for clippings and leaves, that kind of thing. The assistant superintendent of the street department advised that you'll see the line there for Meadow Creek and Cliven Reach, where we had a focus of a tagging effort there that probably, probably extended further into that area than any other part of the city. But you can certainly see that the tags that provided that information about this suspended service seemed to really make a difference in the amount of material that they had out on the curbside as well. So taking into account the concerns expressed at the April 14th meeting and the data obtained through the curbside assessment, we proposed the following. We would remove all the current curbside data one or around the last week of April as far as conditions permit. That actually started today. We'll have a monthly collection of yard waste, which is grass clippings and tree limbs. Simply because that's, seems to be this time of the year, that's going to be one of the biggest perpetrators. We'll advertise that date two weeks prior to the actual collection date through customary terms, but as well, we plan to use the city's VMS boards and we'll move those around so that we'll, as best as we can, get the word out so that everybody understands that we'll be around at the end of the month. We'll have a quarterly collection of bulk items. That's the furniture and mattresses and metal appliances, that kind of thing. We'll do the same thing to advertise that two weeks prior to the collection date for the same reason, to get the word out as much as possible. We also propose to modify the work schedule. So the employees will work 10-hour days on a 3-2 split, which would, in one given work week, we would have three 10-hour days and then the second work week would be two. The reason for doing that is to be consistent with the federal regulations as far as paying overtime. That was one of the goals, was to not pay overtime during that many hours, 40 in a single work week. So we believe that that will also help mitigate the risk of cross-contamination from sharing vehicles as well. Ultimately, would reduce the paid administrative leave from 40 hours to 30 in a bi-week pay period as well. Due to the 24/7 operation of the water and sewer plants, the critical nature of those services, we don't anticipate a change to the proposed seven days on, seven days off with their schedule. Lastly, we'll continue to monitor the latest public health guidance and executive orders issued by the governor. And we will make adjustments as necessary as we had always planned to. So we would recommend that the mayor and comm council discuss the proposal outlined above and certainly provide direction if there is some alternative views.
Right, thank you, Mr. Glass. Before I open it up to any other questions, I just wanted to ask myself. Do your folks have enough protective gear? Do they have masks and gloves and things like that that they would need as they're out in the field?
Yes, sir. They do have actually N95 masks as well and they're probably coming to the end of those, but just face coverings is sufficient.
Okay, very good. Just want to make sure that they have what they need. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Mr. Glass?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, related to your question, I just want you guys to know. I guess there are companies out there that are just on LinkedIn doing searches for mayors. But we, I'm getting a lot of inquiries and messages from people that do have inventory PPE supplies. So I haven't responded to any of them. But if we do at any point need things, we're having trouble finding it, let me know and I can forward over the contacts to whoever would be purchasing those. Because there are clearly companies out there that have at least some of the stuff that we would need. So if anybody, you know, any of the directors or, you know, anyone needs anything like that, please reach out. I have a growing list of very eager vendors that would like to sell PPE to municipalities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would anyone else like to be heard?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for working hard to bring this together. I know there's been a good bit of discussion about this. And to follow up on what the mayor just said, Mr. Glass and I had talked several weeks ago about making sure that everybody had enough PPE so that they could do everything safely. But I just really think that one of the hallmarks of this council is how it is that we worked hard to overcome some, perhaps some differences of opinion and came up with what I believe is in the best interest of the citizens. And I really, really super appreciate it. And I've certainly appreciated your time, Mr. President, because you've borne the brunt of some of my phone calls. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And I know you've been on point with a lot of citizens on this. So thanks for your good work in talking to people and encouraging a result here. Anyone else like to be heard? I just thank you. Oh, Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and kind of thank everybody for coming together and compromising. I know last council meeting, I was, I was a little concerned over the situation. So I just want to thank everybody for stepping up and coming together and finding a solution for the citizens, albeit probably a temporary solution, whenever that temporary ends, but a temporary solution nonetheless.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. President?
Anyone else? Mr. Cavaci?
So I guess first I'll echo what everybody else said in terms of thanks for trying to work on this. I'm glad we're going to have the bulk pick up. I think that's important. But I'm still not, I want to be clear before I make this comment and I want to ask the question. So my understanding is we're going from, the folks are going to work, they were working, because we just discovered this in the last council meeting. So they're working, they were working one week on, one week off, correct? Mr. Glass?
So the only seven-day work, I'm still unmuted. The only seven-day arrangement was the water and wastewater systems. The street never worked seven days straight.
I'm sorry, it got garbled. Streets, I'm sorry, we're doing what?
So the only sub-departments that worked seven on and seven off were the water and sewer departments. The street department never worked seven. They worked five-day work week.
Five, they would work five days and then they'd be off for seven days and then they would come back on and work five more days. Is that correct?
So the days that they would be off were, of course, weekend days. And then the next five-day work week, they would be on administrative leave. That's correct.
And what you're proposing is, is that they will now work three days on, have however many days off, and then the following week, they're going to work, it's three 10-hour days on, right?
That's correct.
It's 30 hours in one week and then the next week, they're going to work 20 hours, two 10-hour days.
That's correct.
So we're gaining, we're going from working 40 hours every two weeks to now they're going to work 50 hours every two weeks.
That's correct. And in the meeting we had with the public works committee, I committed to 10-plus. So we'll see how the day goes, but it'll be a minimum of 10 hours.
And the reason for not working, because now we've got folks that are going to have five and six days off in a row. So why aren't we working on Saturdays also? I mean, I realize Saturdays in a normal environment happen to be a weekend, but when you've got seven straight days off, I'm not sure Saturdays actually count as a weekend when you've got that whole week off. I don't know why we can't pick up more, is I guess what I'm asking.
So I certainly understand what you're saying. This is in, as a result of the federal wage regulations, if we work more than 40 hours in a single week, whether it's even on the weekends, that's within that pay period, then we're forced to work, or to pay overtime for those hours. That's as I understand it from Ms. Matthews.
So if an employee works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 10 hours a week and then is off until the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the next group of employees work Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then they're off until the following Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they have to be paid overtime for that Saturday?
Anytime of the over 40 hours, is my understanding.
Well, no, no, that's over 40 hours. It's 30 hours a week. So I guess what I'm saying is that I'm not satisfied that we're paying folks for 80 hours worth of work and we're going from 40 to 50. I just, I'm glad we can do the bulk pick up, but, you know, I think we've got other departments and certainly other organizations where folks are finding ways to put in most of the hours that they're getting paid for. And I'm just, I'm sorry, I know I'm being a hard ass here, but I'm still not completely satisfied with it. But you know what? I'm one of five. I'll shut up at this point. I've spoke my piece and I'll let you move on, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. I think you raised some important points and, you know, this is a work in progress. In my view, as we try to deal with how we manage the city's, you know, essential operations during the pandemic. So I think that these are useful things to keep in mind. And, you know, we just encourage Ms. Matthews and Mr. Glass and everyone else who's involved in managing staff to keep in mind, you know, the points that are important to us, which is we keep the staff safe, we provide the citizens with the services that they expect, and we do it in a manner that, you know, continues to, you know, reflect good stewardship of the city's resources, you know, including, you know, money and personnel. So, you know, we've got to keep trying to balance all those things and we'll keep looking at that. So, you know, I think everybody understands the concerns that we raised last meeting and tonight as well. Anything else on this before we move on? All right, thank you. And then any other items on the COVID-19 response that we want to note at this time? I think, we continue to have some questions about cancellations of events. I think it's worth noting once again that Flower and Jazz Festival unfortunately had to be canceled this year. Very much wish we could hold it. Also that the American Legion will not be holding the Memorial Day Parade. You know, of course, far too risky to have that kind of concentration of people lining Main Street. It's still at this point in time. Anything else we need to mention, Mr. Mayor or Ms. Matthews?
I don't think so.
Yes, President Pecoraro, there were a couple of comments I'd like to make and I know the chief has some information he'd like to share. So President Pecoraro, you just mentioned some of the city's special events and I believe you and the mayor are aware, because I've discussed it with both of you, we have a kind of a looming deadline to make a decision about the beer and barbecue stroll. And if we don't cancel by that date, which happens to be May 1st, we will incur certain financial losses. So I had a fairly extensive discussion with our assistant recreation director, Ms. Mollendorf. She consulted with Ms. Gruber, who is still on medical leave. And after discussing the logistics of everything that we're dealing with, even for an event that's almost two months away, it is staff's recommendation this evening that the city cancel the beer and barbecue stroll for 2020. I think if everyone is aware, there remains a great deal of uncertainty surrounding the state's road to recovery. Certainly, all of us on staff are sort of waiting and watching all the governors' press conferences and, you know, tracking the executive orders. But I think the one thing that is clear in his sort of three-step plan to recovery is that large events such as the beer and barbecue stroll will likely not be allowed for some time. And in talking to Ms. Mollendorf, trying to weigh when that picture might be clearer, we're probably going to run up against just some logistical deadlines that, you know, they can't turn on an event like this on a dime. they can't turn on an event like this on a dime. And we also anticipate that some of the requirements of the state, when large events such as this are allowed again, may result in us having to obtain certain equipment, make certain changes in the event footprint, and there's just not enough time, candidly, with so much uncertainty. So unless the mayor and common council have thoughts to the contrary, staff would like to proceed with formally canceling the Beer and Barbecue Stroll so we can, you know, cancel those contracts by May 1st to avoid any financial losses, make the necessary notification to vendors and begin the process of issuing event refunds to those who have bought tickets.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Mr. Mayor, do you want to weigh in before we go to anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that looking at what our timeline was going to be, large events, looking at, I mean, even outside of our ability to make decisions, I think the thing that's going to take the longest to get back to normal is going to be the group restrictions. And I mean, there's just no way we're going to be able to have a stroll in June. I don't think those group restrictions are going to be down far enough and I don't think that it would be responsible for us to do it anyway. And, you know, as much as we want to wait as long as we can to cancel any events, we also have to realize that, you know, we're going to incur costs if we don't do it soon enough. We also, you know, there are vendors that count on these things and while it's unfortunate that it's not going to, you know, some of these things aren't going to happen, the last thing we want to do is give them uncertainty on whether or not they need to spend money or do things to prepare for them. So the more lead, you know, the more lead time we can give them for an event being canceled, I think the better. And, you know, I think there's no way that we would be able to have that and I think it's smart to just go ahead and take that off the calendar.
All right, thank you. Anyone else care to comment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
What's the dollar amount that we're looking to risk if we hold off on making this decision?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Mollendor. I don't think the dollar amount itself is that large council member, Kavachi. I think the bigger issue in talking to Ms. Mollendor is just the ability of the staff to ramp up on very short notice and also in all likelihood obtain needed supplies. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Mollendor, who certainly knows more about this than I do.
Ms. Mollendor, are you still on?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I'm searching my emails here to see what report we had. So what we're looking at as of right now, 50% of our deposits in entertainment is about $3,400. We also owe mission picks at this point $366. Our rental company, 50% deposit would be $1,637. Our VIP area deposit would be $1,500. And our liquor license fees of $250.
And that's all non-refundable deposits if the event's canceled? Even in light of what's going on today, these folks aren't willing to potentially refund the deposit if the event doesn't happen?
That is something that we were going to discuss further if we could, you know, buy some more time with some of these vendors. The only thing is, is, you know, we kind of discussed as a staff that, you know, May 1st would be our deadline to know whether or not we're putting on this event, just because of other things, you know, securing our volunteers and a lot of our volunteers are elderly population. So we do have some concerns whether or not we're going to be able to obtain those people for this event. We also have our seating and table areas and we're worried about disinfecting those and, you know, whether masks are to be worn. And, you know, we have thought about ways in which we could, you know, continue the tasting and sampling of the beer, but our original and how we work these is we provide each person with a glass that then they would go to each vendor to sample. So it's a lot of just restructuring of the event and, you know, following the guidelines once they're in place.
Understood. What about conceivably, just instead of just saying we're not going to do it, can't we potentially look at rescheduling it sometime later in the year, in the fall potentially?
That is something that we can look at, but there is other events that we do in the fall, especially the big one with the four-day Fall Fest Festival is probably our larger event that we do.
And I'm wondering, don't you have a very short window between Fall Fest and then the Oyster Stroll as well?
Yeah, generally that one is about two weeks in between events to turn that around. And then, you know, we're still holding out hope that we can operate the Westminster Municipal Pool in a summer camp as well.
I think these are difficult choices that we have to make, but I, you know, just having listened to the governor the other day and knowing other things that are being canceled, I suspect that, you know, we're still not going to be, the governor's still not going to be allowing large type events, gatherings like that over the course of the summer. And, you know, I suspect that, you know, we're going to get to this point sooner or later in terms of having to call it off. And, you know, it seems to me that the better course is to let people not plan on something that they're not, not have people plan on something that we don't really have any confidence we're going to be able to do. And, you know, go ahead and make the call sooner rather than later. But that's just my view.
I tend to agree with you, Mr. President, as much as I hate it.
Mr. President, I mean, I kind of agree with you. I'm not muted, right? No, okay. That I think a lot of the events are going to be canceled, just whether it be because the governor has mandated or just because it ultimately may be a safer decision. But I'm wondering if we can come up with another way, whether it be virtually to have events in a different way, instead of trying to figure out what we're obviously not being able to do at all. Maybe kind of think out of the box and come up with something that we can do. Because I'm kind of with you. I'm not seeing opening pools, I'm not seeing camps, I'm not seeing any of that happening. But is there something that we can do, that we can do virtually?
We have a virtual family cookout all across the city one day.
I don't know. I just would like to see us think of another way to have things that maybe then later people will come back and say, wow, they did this, so, you know, here I am.
It's a good idea. We should give that some thought. It's a good idea. And we're all participating in virtual meetings and virtual happy hours and virtual lunches and things like that. So maybe we can come up with some kind of a clever virtual community event that will keep Westminster's citizens entertained and engaged. And so that's worth giving some thought. Ms. Mollendor, you and Ms. Gruber are very clever with these sorts of things. So maybe you could think of something and the rest of us will try as well.
Well, most certainly look into something.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
Mr. President.
Mr. Deha.
Yeah, the, Ms. Gilbert and I were talking about this earlier in our capacity as the Rec and Parks Committee, that we were pondering approaching Ms. Mollendor and Ms. Gruber to come up with some creative and innovative way to maybe promote the city and promote recreation. And if anybody can do it, Ms. Mollendor and Ms. Gruber can do it. But I guess my research indicates that this is going to be a longer journey than a shorter journey in order to be safe. And I think since we're in the COVID discussion period, I think that we should not overlook the opportunity to give a shout out to our citizens. When I've talked with elected officials across the state, we're not having a lot of the problems that some of the other elected officials are having as far as compliance and as far as folks coming together and working together really well. I think we really should compliment our vendors and our citizens for how well that we have looked at coming together as a community. Ms. Gilbert has come up with the food drive and our restaurants have come up with innovative ways of addressing the quarantine. So I think we would be amiss if we didn't do that. Sadly, I think we do need to go ahead and, Ms. Gilbert and I were talking about this earlier, sadly, I think we do need to go ahead and cancel that event, the beer and event. So, and then also, before we're finished with this section, should we just maybe have just a brief conversation about the MML convention?
Well, I know that I'm looking forward to attending virtually, having heard today that we will, that, you know, the music league has decided to not host the convention in Ocean City in person this year. So I think there's still a great opportunity at a, you know, to attend a lot of terrific informative sessions online. I know I've done another convention recently, you know, conference online and there's some pretty impressive platforms out there. Hopefully they picked one of those and will be able to do it that way.
Well, I'm aware that Ms. Schlesler is going to go ahead and cancel the hotel reservations. What is your predisposition as far as our registration fees? Do you want to cancel them and re-register for the virtual event or do you want to try and put that credit towards whoever, whatever we decide to do as far as the virtual event? That might be something that the Finance Committee might want to take a look at.
Yeah, perhaps we can discuss that offline and, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with everyone, Ms. Schlesler and I have been watching what would have been the early bird deadline. So at this juncture, we have not registered anyone for the conference because there was no financial benefit for doing so and we just kind of wanted to wait and see how things developed in light of the pandemic.
That's a good report.
Yeah, I think, yeah, President Pecoraro, if you're okay, I would like to give Chief Ledwell the opportunity to share some information before we move on.
Please do. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, everybody. So real quick, just a couple of brief topics. We are tracking non-budgeted COVID-19 related expenses for two things. One is through the Public Assistance Program through FEMA for potential reimbursement of emergency protective measures. And then the second thing is through the recent CARES Act, there's the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So we are tracking both our expenses up to date as well as anticipated expenses through the end of the calendar year and we have to submit those through the county by Wednesday. So we have those two potential methods of seeking reimbursement. So citywide, we're looking at putting together something for both of those things. As far as statistics go, as of today, within Carroll County, we've had 403 positive test cases for COVID-19. And the latest numbers as far as fatalities were from Friday, there's a 47, four being in the community and 43 in the congregate facilities. 71 individuals within the county have been released from isolation after testing positive. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. We don't have any sense of the breakdown of how many actual city residents are in that number, do we?
It's not broken down to us. That number comes to us through the Health Department and they don't break it down in the municipality.
Yeah, I've not seen it and I just was wondering if you had any additional information. So, thank you. Anything else, chief?
That's it. Thank you.
No, thank you. And thank, please thank, you know, the officers out there and Mr. Glass, the folks who are out there, you know, keeping the water flowing and the toilets flushing. We appreciate that they are staying on the job during this time and doing what they're doing.
Mr. President.
So with that, Mr. Deha.
Can, may I ask the chief a question?
Certainly.
Chief, perhaps you might have a report on how well the respite center has worked over at East Middle School. I've had a lot of folks ask me about it and so far from what it is, I hear that it's been fairly unremarkable as far as a strain on the city or anything like that.
Sure. So the Citizen Services Program has set up a medical respite site on the backside of East Middle School. The staff works out of the best building, which is to the rear of East Middle School. So there are several sectioned areas. Inside of the auxiliary gym are non-COVID-19 related individuals who are homeless, who are seeking medical respite. And the last report was that there was a total of nine individuals, advantage of that over this weekend. There are zero related COVID-related patients on the medical respite site to date. So, and the number nine was the high that I've heard so far.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to, back to a more regular agenda. We have reports from standing committees. We'll try and move through these quickly. Mr. Deha, any news from the Arts Council that we need to hear?
Yeah, speaking of innovative and creative approaches to the COVID pandemic, the Peep Show, the online Peep Show continues through May 1st or it closes on May 1st. If you go to the Carroll Arts Center website, Speaking and Building Upon web redesign, they redesigned their web. It's very user friendly. It was a great redesign and you'll find a number of interesting programs there. There are also, the council's Thread exhibit is now online, again, looking at creative and innovative ways to help folks to get through the pandemic. There's also been some discussion about the ACE FAC. I reached out to the Public Works Director earlier today and he said that we discussed that now would be a perfect time to address some of the ACE FAC issues over at the Carroll Arts Center because it's empty, the public's not there. But unfortunately, the COVID, the coronavirus problems have caused some problems with the manufacturing of the HVAC equipment. So we'll have to wait on that before we get in there and address some of those concerns. So we're looking forward to that taking place, but it's just not going to happen quite right now. And I'll entertain any questions, but thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Deha. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling.
Nothing to report tonight, thanks.
All right, thank you. I will just remind everybody as, on behalf of the Finance Committee, that, you know, you've seen the budget presentation. I want to thank the mayor and Mr. Yingling and Ms. Matthews and Ms. Palmer. We spent a lot of hours in meetings hashing out some of the issues and getting this prepared. And I'll particularly thank the staff, Ms. Matthews and Ms. Palmer for, you know, trying to hit this moving target brought on by the pandemic and estimating our revenues so we can develop the budget. Thanks very much. Looking forward to our budget workshops on April 30th and May 4th and having, you know, some thorough discussion of some of the big issues that we've got to look at for down the road. So thanks very much on that. Personnel, Ms. Gilbert.
Now I'm not muted. Nothing to report.
Right, thank you. Public safety, Mr. Kavachi.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of brief things. Number one, I'm sure if you all have not had a chance yet, you can look at the statistics and as you can see, year over year, definitely crime is down a fair amount in some of the categories. The numbers are about half of what they are in March compared to, of 2020 compared to 19. The one thing I did find a little unusual was the juvenile offenders is about the same. So I guess that kind of coincides with, you know, you think you're, what's the word I'm looking for when you're young? You know?
Youthful indiscretions.
Yeah, I guess that's the word I was looking for. So, you know?
We'll just use that in any case.
Yeah, that's not exactly what I was looking for, but you know what I meant. But, so that's good news. You know, if we're looking for anything positive coming out of this entire situation, that's probably one of the situation, that's probably one of the positives that's out there is crime is definitely down. Unfortunately, there, you know, there are a few categories, we are seeing some upticks, some domestic violence is still prevalent out there. One of the things, though, is that doesn't mean our police officers are working any less. They're out there every day, you know, doing their job as if nothing has changed. And I think that, you know, I'd like to take a moment, and I know I speak for all of us, that we would like to show our gratitude and appreciation, you know, for them doing that. You know, they're out there putting themselves in direct contact with the public. And when I say direct, I mean they've got to, you know, physically be touching people and doing the things the rest of us are avoiding at all times. They don't have that option. So, Mr. Mayor, I know this probably would fall more under council comments and discussion, but you know, you and I have had some conversations about, you know, certain staff members and areas where, you know, there's something we're going to do. And I'm looking forward to that conversation because clearly, when it comes to the police officers out there every day, I know that's very much one of the main areas that you're thinking about. And I appreciate that. And I'm glad we've had that, those conversations. You've put so much thought into that. So I wanted to compliment you for it. Other than that, Mr. President, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. And lost my place here. Public Works, Mr. Yingling, anything you'd care to add?
Yeah, we, just one thing that came to my attention right before the meeting. As a lot of you know, right when the mayor and I came on to the council, we were kind of really going full steam ahead with our water reuse project. We worked with the Hogan Administration and the Maryland Department of Environment to kind of get the green light, first municipality in Maryland to do so, to do a water reuse pilot program. And what a lot of you may not know is that Mr. Glass and our consultant for this pilot have been involved with a, the Water Reuse Association. And so they asked, and Mr. Glass can correct me if I'm wrong, but they asked, I guess they got wind of our project, our pilot project through the grapevine, through maybe our consultant. And Mr. Glass went down to Washington DC to meet with Senator Garden and Van Hollen's staff and to tell them about our project. And we just found out today that the lobbying effort was a success and that a total of $25 million was allocated to the Alternative Water Source Grants Pilot Program in the draft Senate Water Infrastructure Bill. So, I just, that's a huge deal. I think that's getting us national attention in what we're doing. And well done, Mr. Glass, and thank you for doing that. And if you want to add anything, please do.
You're welcome, sir.
Good news. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Yingling. And finally, the Recreation and Parks Committee, Mr. Dayhoff. Want to unmute, Mr. Dayhoff?
I think, I think we've covered a lot of the recreation and parks stuff pretty well earlier. I think, I think we'll let it, let it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on. Thank you, everybody, for the committee reports. It's, we have on the agenda next, council comments and discussion. If there's anything that didn't fall under a committee report somebody would like to bring up, we can do that at this time. We'll just go down what would have been the council table. We'll start with Mr. Yingling. Anything else you'd like to mention, Mr. Yingling?
Not this time.
All right, Ms. Gilbert. All right, thank you.
No, not at this time.
And Mr. Dayhoff.
It's interesting, while, while we're talking, I had put a feeler out to get some PPP equipment for the street department. And I'm just now getting, I'm just now getting a text message that some more, some more equipment has come in. You know, I wanted to give a shout out to the planning department and Ms. Gerhardt and Mr. Depot because hopefully the council had an opportunity to read how well the Good Cause waiver was prepared. And Mr. Pecoraro will remember that we worked really hard on that back in 2002. And it's really good to see that that legislation and that forward thinking is still working out really well. And Ms. Gerhardt's done a really good job with looking over the water allocation. And we just, I think it'd be really important to, to give them a shout out. And then also, as a lot of folks are aware, I worked pretty hard on the budget in a former life, and I really appreciated all the hard work that was done on the budget. And I guess I was rather happy with a lot of what it is that I heard. And I'm looking forward to the, I'm looking forward to the budget hearings. I guess we still have a lot on our plate these days, but I think between, I guess with the budget and dealing with the COVID, I guess we'll just leave it at that for right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. Dayhoff, you've got a couple of other issues that you're concerned about. They haven't been forgotten, and we're going to get to that.
Yeah, I said earlier today, I just don't think that, I don't, I don't think it's a really good idea for me to read my laundry list, looking at the complexity of today's meeting. I just appreciate that. I know you and the mayor have not lost sight of some of these initiatives. And I think it'd be important that we come out of the COVID epidemic, the pandemic, I think we, important that we come out on the other side with our feet running and look at some of these other initiatives, these long-range initiatives. It's a perfect time to do research. I mean, it's not like we're, we're going out that much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I know it's council comments, but I did, I did just want to take a second to thank everybody. I didn't really do it earlier. I know our proclamations today were thanking people, but I mean, there's just a lot of people doing things that, that aren't normally part of their job right now. So, you know, our staff, there are residents that are, that are stepping up and doing things, providing, you know, masks and food to people that need it. There's just a lot of stuff going on. And all of our, all of our departments are stepping up one way or the other. Some are at greater risk. And then, you know, elected officials, I know, there's been a lot going on in public work. So I'd like to thank Councilman Yingling for that. Finance Committee, you and Councilman Yingling, just, you know, we've all kind of been, you know, doing, doing a lot of work right now. And I just, and then, and then too, I just, I just wanted to thank everybody. And Ms. Matthews, the entire staff, and just everybody that's, that's stepping up right now. Sometimes it's, it's a lot of work. Sometimes it's just you have to make tough decisions that not everyone's going to be happy with. But I think, I think everyone right now is doing their part plus some. And then, and then just to piggyback a little bit on to Councilman Dayhoff's comment, there are a lot of things that are going to suffer from this. We just talked about, you know, our, we're known for our, you know, our events in the city. We've even talked about that being part of, you know, how we ran and marked our city as, you know, the city that trolls or through the events somehow. You know, no doubt that we are, we're not going to be able to replace those with any, anything virtual, at least not a great extent. There's just, there's just nothing we're going to do to totally recoup that. And there are plenty of things like that in the city that are going to happen. I mean, this is going to have a inverse effect on economy. There are things that just, we can't, there's only so much we can do. And then there are things that we can. So I, I think that this is a good opportunity. I think that a lot of people, personally, you know, whether it's, it's you're doing, you're trying to change a habit of your, of your own, businesses are kind of retooling. And then I think government's going to be different. I think that while there are things that we can't do during this, there are things that we, that we can. And that was one of the reasons I kind of do headfirst into looking at communications and our website. But I think we have a lot of projects going on right now, and we need to look at the ones that we can move forward. And while we're going to come out of this, you know, no doubt, just, you know, crippled in certain ways, we should come out, you know, stronger than others. So I think that I want, I want people to know that we're, we're working hard to find those opportunities because there, there are always opportunities in every, in every bad situation. And, you know, I think, I think just, you know, I think government should be no different. I think so far, I think that's, I think that's what we've been doing. But I just, I think it's important and I want people to know that. And that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we'll move on from there to ordinances and resolutions. We have one ordinance for introduction tonight, ordinance number 922, an ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, Maryland, approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. Ms. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that the ordinance is in your budget, or I'm sorry, in your council packets as part of the presentation that Ms. Matthews made earlier. This ordinance does incorporate everything that she presented in her presentation. It also keeps the real property tax rate at 56 cents per $100 of assessed value. You have workshops on April 30th and on May 4th. And then the second reading of this ordinance will occur on May 11th. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Palmer. So may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number 922?
I'll move to introduce 922, Mr. President.
There's a motion for Mr. Kavachi for introduction. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Yingling. Any comments or questions at this time? Of course, we will have two work sessions on the budget, as we noted before, on April 30th and May 4th, where you have a opportunity for a complete discussion of what's in there. So hearing nothing else at this time, we'll move on to a vote on introduction only. This just means that it will be before the council, for those who are viewing, the way we handle our resolutions and ordinances. All those in favor of introduction, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and ordinance number 922 is introduced. Moving on to unfinished business, we have annual review of the Automated Enforcement Program, year 10. Chief Ledwell.
Yes, good evening again. So at the last meeting of the Mayor and Common Council, the Police Department did our annual report on the Automated Enforcement Program, specifically the sole remaining red light camera on southbound Malcolm Drive at Nursery Road. And I was asked to complete some follow-up action, specifically to look at collisions, personal injury collisions at Malcolm Drive and Route 140, which was the intersection sites of cameras 501 through 504. So there was a few things that, when I did this research, and you should have two tables, one for Malcolm Drive and Nursery Road, and one for Route 140 and Malcolm Drive in the council packets. One thing that the collisions, the records retention policy for collisions are five years. So I could get collisions, accident reports that are older than 2015. We'd probably have to go through the State Highway Administration. We reached out to them, and they said that it would be a matter of months before they could get us the information that I would need for that. So we were able to pull from two sources. We were able to pull from our in-house record system, which, as you know, we took on a new system, piggybacked along with the county in 2017, 2018. And a lot of the data didn't transfer, migrate from the old system to the new system as well as we had hoped it would. So I'm a little skeptical on the data that was pulled there. It's pretty low. So the other source that we have, beginning in 2015 to present, is the Automated Crash Reporting System, which is a statewide electronic collision reporting system that most police agencies in the state do their accident reports on. It's through the State Police E-Tex program. And the, the data on the table from 2015 through present shows those numbers. So what I looked at was the number of investigated crashes at the site of 140 and Malcolm Drive. Investigated crashes occur when there is a vehicle that is disabled to the point where it needs to be towed, and/or when one of the parties involved in the collision reports an injury, a personal injury. So as you can see, Route 140 and Malcolm, from 2015 through 2019, there was anywhere in the range of 19 investigated crashes per year. Of those, anywhere from six to 14 were property damage, and anywhere from one to 10 were a personal injury. It looks like 2016 was an outlier for some reason. So overall, it's difficult to do a true statistical analysis as to the effect of the red light camera on that intersection. Number one, because two of the four cameras were only in place for a single year, and you got the remaining two, the straight through lane ones, were in place for two years. So we don't have a lot of data. We don't have a lot of data pre-Automated Enforcement Program for the same reason, the records retention reason. So I don't have that data available. But what I was able to dig up, I provided to you. And our recommendation would still be to discontinue the program on southbound Malcolm Drive at Nursery Road, just based on the, the amount of staff time that it takes to run the program versus the benefit that we get from having the system in place. I'm all for public safety and for, and I do believe that Automated Enforcement Programs at locations that are identified as being high risk do statistically lower the amount of personal injury collisions at that location. I'm just not sure that the volume that we're looking at, at this particular remaining site is worth the amount of staff time that we put into the program. But obviously, should the mayor and council want us to continue, we would, we would gladly continue with the program.
All right. Thank you, Chief. So we have the chief's recommendation from the last meeting, and, and the follow-up report. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. President.
Mr., go ahead.
Mr. Kavachi is Chair of Public Safety. I'm going to go to you first.
So I, I was the, I think the driver of asking the chief to bring forward some of that information that he had for us in the packet this evening. And I, while I can't quote specific statistics pre-2015, I can tell you that since I, since I've been Chair of Public Safety since 2009, we've been looking at this program since then, and consistently reducing these cameras. We started out with, I believe it was five or six locations that we had them in. And as they no longer showed a public safety value, and I want to be very clear, revenue had nothing to do with any of the decisions because all of those cameras were producing positive revenue, as does this particular camera right now. It still produces, even after accounting for staff time, positive cash flow in terms of revenue. That, that was never a decision in terms of when we were taking them offline, because every single one of them was still making money when we did it. But the, the decision was always based upon, were they creating safety? Were they, were they making that intersection more safe? And over time, it became clear that, that not only weren't they doing that, but in a couple of cases, we saw an uptick in rear end collisions because of the cameras being there. So we subsequently removed each of those cameras, and this was the last one that was still in place. And I can tell you, because I was paying attention all this time, that pre-2015, those numbers were a good bit higher. So it's obvious that they've, they've dropped relatively significantly over the past number of years. And I think a big part of that is the no turn, the no left turn light that was installed there a number of years ago. That was a big factor in reducing those accidents. And I think that's showing in the statistics. In the end, I think, I agree with the chief. I think it's time to take this system offline and discontinue its operation, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gilbert, I think you wanted to be recognized?
Um, yes. And I don't know if this is, this is the chance, but I kind of, I agree with, with Councilman Kavachi. I wonder if we could, I could suggest that we suspend the use of the red light camera at that intersection? Is that?
Well, I think that's the chief's recommendation, that we discontinue it.
Yeah.
Is that her motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to say I support that. I mean, so, you know, last meeting when Chief Ledwell brought this up, it sounded like he already knew what we should do, and I think that we all trusted that. I just wanted to see the data, and, you know, I guess, I mean, provided the best data that we had, and I don't think it shows, I don't think it shows anything that would change my mind. I think we should go ahead and cut it.
All right. So I don't know if we need one, but I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adopt the chief's recommendation.
I make a motion to adopt the chief's recommendation to suspend the use of the red light camera.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Gilbert and a second from Mr. Cavaci. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor of adopting the chief's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. And we will now move on, I think, to the public housing agent, to new business, and the Public Housing Agency FY 2020 Administrative Plan and Five-Year Plan. Ms. Valencisi.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So just starting off with a little background, the Public Housing Plan, the PHA, is a comprehensive guide to the PHA's policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting the local housing needs and goals. There are two parts to the PHA Plan, PHA Plan, the Five-Year Plan, and the Annual Plan, which are submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development every fifth PHA fiscal year and annually. For the fiscal year 2020, the Housing Services Staff is recommending changes to those plans. The documents are available for review at the city's administrative office at 56 West Main Street, as well as on the city's website. The summary of the proposed changes to the five-year and administrative plans, which you have in your packet, I will summarize. So in Chapter 3, Applying for Admission, we wanted to make sure that we added, with the new module on the city's software, we added the ability for people to apply online, as well as request applications to be mailed and/or to pick up in the lobby. That was one. On Chapter 4, we removed the pilot program that is no longer exists. And on Chapter 20, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, we previously had the Family Self-Sufficiency Program that encouraged people with a Housing Choice Voucher to go into homeownership. What we did there, we had to have 25 of those Housing Choice Vouchers succeed in their goals, and once those families graduated from the program, we were no longer obligated to continue that program. We were not receiving a grant for FSS Coordinator any longer, so we abolished that program. On Chapter 21, under Homeownership Voucher Program, that was tied into the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, so therefore, we removed that chapter. We did, we can still pursue, if there is someone who's interested in purchasing a home while they have a voucher, and instead of receiving a rental subsidy, receive a subsidy towards a mortgage, we can still pursue that avenue. It just isn't tied to the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. And Chapter 12, under Recertification, so the Housing Choice Voucher participants that are in the program, they are required to report changes throughout the year, as well as annually. Previously, we had any changes that were greater than 300. We then enacted an interim change that would affect the amount of half we paid. We just raised that amount to $500. We put those, all those changes out per notified public. We gave, we have an advisory board. It's a resident advisory board of people that are randomly picked. We give them a copy of the changes and the plan, and ask them to review, and then ask them for comments. There were no comments, and it's recommended, the staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council approve the Westminster Public Housing Agency's Annual Plan and Five-Year Plan. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Valencisi. Are there any questions from Ms. Valencisi?
Mr. President, I have a couple questions.
Ms. Gilbert.
I do. I have a couple questions. So Ms. Valencisi, on the beginning of this, I'm just, and some of this is just, I guess, curiosity due to my profession. On Chapter 3, is the waitlist for City HUD now accessible on the city's website? So that if I apply, say whoever applies for City HUD, can we determine on the website where that person is on the waitlist?
So there, if you go to the city's, City of Westminster's website, there is a link that then goes to the software, the happy software, where someone can apply, and they create an account, and they will be able to, to be able to see what number they are on the list. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yeah. So following up with that, how many people are currently on our City HUD's waiting list?
At the top of my head, I think it's close to 1,000, like 900 and something.
Okay. And my last question, as I noticed, the FSS, the FSS program, we're no longer, the City HUD is no longer doing that program, because there have been 25 families that graduated from it? Am I assuming that's the reason why?
So we no longer receive the grant money to have a FSS Coordinator. That happened many years ago. We did finish out the requirement of having 25 families graduate from that program. It was quite difficult to continue trying to operate that program without having an FSS Coordinator, and also, I wouldn't say that there, it was not a whole lot of interest also. It was a combination of the two.
Huh. Okay. I would just think that that would be something that people would want to try to do, than to rely on HUD, or even for that matter, a city, because you would be trying to get people to be self-sufficient, rather than rely on government money.
Yes, and it is a very good program. I agree with you.
Okay. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And are there any other questions from Ms. Valencisi or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, then we'll say thank you for the report. I don't believe any action is necessary, is it?
I don't think there's anything we have to do with it, is there?
Well, I think we're just receiving a report, aren't we, Ms. Matthews?
I think...
I believe that Ms. Valencisi is looking for approval for these changes, so that she can incorporate them into the two plans prior to submitting them to HUD. Cindy, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, very good. Then I will entertain a motion to approve the changes recommended by Ms. Valencisi. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve those changes, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Motion from Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And there's a second from Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the changes are approved. Thank you, Ms. Valencisi.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Matthews, you have some changes you'd like to bring to us on the contract for the renovation of 45 West Main.
Yes, thank you, President Pat Guerrero. And I want to express my appreciation to the mayor and to the council president for allowing this item to be added. We'd been waiting for some pricing, and that did not come in until the evening hours of Friday night. So thank you for your consideration. Some of these items, should we wish to proceed with them, might be more costly if we don't make timely decisions. So as noted in the staff memorandum, the city recently requested pricing from Warner Construction, which is the general contractor for the 45 West Main project, about possible additions to the contracted scope of work for the project. The information included in the agenda packet falls into kind of two buckets. One is items for which we have received, final change order pricing, and those for which Warner Construction has provided preliminary estimates. So I'll start with those for which we have final change order pricing. And I would note, with one exception, all the items that we'll be discussing this evening are discretionary, and basically, we're trying to get input from the Mayor and Common Council as to where you would like to go. So the first item, which is referred to in the agenda packet as change order, potential change order three, deals with additional telecommunication items. In reviewing the project's submittals, Technology Manager Dave Davidson expressed interest in having Warner Construction install additional telecommunication items. We initially received some pricing from Warner, which is what went out in the agenda packet Sunday evening, that came in much higher than we had anticipated for these additional telecommunication items. That pricing was $32,424.85. Warner, again Brunet Architects, which is the project architect, then reached out to Mr. Davidson and myself to suggest an alternative kind of work scope that would probably be less costly. Under that scenario, the contractor would only provide roughens and conduits for the additional telecommunication items, and then the city staff could run the additional cabling at a time when it deems appropriate. At the time that we amended the agenda Sunday evening, we did not have that pricing for the reduced scope of work. That was received at the end of this workday, and I have forwarded to the Mayor and Common Council, recognizing, however, that you may not have had the opportunity to review it, given how late in the day it was received. But as opposed to $32,423.85, the reduced scope of work, once again, with the contractor only providing roughens and conduits, that reduced the cost to $11,666.50. If the Mayor and Common Council are amenable to having this work performed, it would be staff's recommendation to go with the scaled-back scope of work, with the pricing, once again, of $11,666.50. Council President Pat Guerrero, would you like me to, would you like me to walk, have you all discuss each item, or do you want me just to go through everything? What would be your preference?
Well, I think maybe we should take them one at a time. And I just want to say before we move on that, you know, I just want to apologize to my colleagues. I know that it's difficult to take these items at the last minute, and we've got a lot of time to review them. However, because of the situation, you know, we find ourselves in with, you know, with the current pandemic, you know, some of these items for the contractor, you know, there are going to be inevitable delays as we go forward. And so when we have the opportunity to keep things moving, I think it's important to try and do so, and make decisions, you know, as on the fly, so to speak. So anyway, that's why we went ahead and put this on. But we'll try to give you more notice of these things as we go forward, not introduce things quite so late in the game. Any discussion on this item? I think, you know, we're saving a good bit of money. Any questions or thoughts or comments?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
So I don't know who's going to be able to answer this. Maybe this is something you do know, Barb, or you have Ms. Matthews, or not. But so I see that, you know, we're cutting it back to conduit. Why is there being, is this being run through a plenum environment, or is it kind of just standard practice for the person that's running it? You know, I'm just curious with the reason for the, I mean, if it's going through a plenum environment, obviously, you need that, or plenum-ready cable, but I just wanted to see what the purpose of that was.
I wish I could answer your question, Mayor Dominic. I think that's probably a better question for Mr. Davidson, but I don't believe he's on that call. In the information I sent out late in the afternoon, there is some detailed information from the contractor and subcontractor that may or may not answer your question, but I apologize. I'm not probably the technically skilled person who can respond to your question.
Okay, just so that doesn't understand what that means. A plenum, so because of fire safety, of certain cables, if they're run through certain environments where they're like, it's close to like, or shared space, like HVAC systems, there are materials and cables that become toxic in the air during a fire or an event like that. So you would need either plenum-ready cable, or you'd go, you need your cable in a conduit. Outside of that, you usually conduit for a little cabling. So that's why I'm asking, we're paying $11,000 for something that we don't need. We may need it, depending on where it's being run, but that's why I was, that's why I was asking that.
Mr. President, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Given our mayor's intimate knowledge with this, because I know at one point in time, I believe he actually even did some of these type of installations in his younger days, I suspect he probably knows far more about this than the rest of us collectively. I'd be more than comfortable with ceding that decision over whether it's a good choice or not, spend that money solely over to the mayor, considering he's got excellent knowledge to make that decision. So I'd be completely comfortable letting him make that call, one way or the other.
I agree.
If everybody's comfortable with that, then Ms. Matthews, we are agreeable, as long as the mayor's agreeable. Is there, or is it time to get the answer tomorrow?
Great. Thank you very much, because they are proceeding with, you know, Warner is kind of moving things along, and having that flexibility will allow us to keep the cost of the work done, because there is a point where it will become more expensive if we do it later. So thank you for that. The second item, which is, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think we still need, Mr. President, I think we still need that in the form of a motion, that we motioned that we leave it up to the mayor's discretion and authorize him to sign certain documents. I mean, I think it's a good idea to put the conduit in, but I'm going to defer to the mayor on that. But I think we still, for the purposes of procurement, I think we still need a motion, if that's okay with you.
All right, so that's fine. You know, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the item, you know, with the...
Subject to the mayor, subject to the mayor's discretion.
I'll move to let that decision be made by the mayor.
Okay.
All right, thanks. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second is a motion from Mr. Cavaci, and a second from Mr. DeHa. Unless there's any further discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. So, Mayor, it's all on you.
Mr. Mayor, you going to pull the wires?
No, I do request that if I need help with any manual labor, that Councilman DeHa be available.
I've pulled many wires. I told Dave Davidson I would help him pull the wires.
Very good. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. The next item for which we have firm pricing, and this, once again, this is a discretionary item, is referred to as change order four, and it basically captures the impact of replacing three bronze-framed two-story storefront windows, along with a storefront bay window located on the diagonal wall along Main Street. These windows were scheduled, existing to remain in the original contract, and once again, this was stat pricing that the city itself requested. If you're facing 45 West Main, I think everyone's aware, there was the main segment of the building that was built roughly in the 60s, and the part that's on a diagonal was constructed in the 80s. It's where the ATM is located. At the end of the day, I, it did occur to me that having some visuals might be helpful. I don't know if everyone had the opportunity to look at those. If not, I can probably try to just click through them with the shared screen, if that would be helpful.
Did you all like them on the screen?
I have them on my tablet.
I looked at the pictures earlier.
It is awesome. You can proceed.
Okay, thank you. So as you saw in the photos, there's obviously, what I sent were existing, a picture of the existing windows, a picture of the, a rendering of what this would look like if we accepted this change order. And then in talking to the architect, they have also identified a third option... And then in talking to the, our architect, they have also identified a third option, which will definitely be lower cost than the change order. Basically, that would keep the existing bronze window frames, and what GBA, the project architect, is proposing is that we would paint the spandrel panels to match the standing seam roofing, and you all also have a rendering of what that would look like. You know, there are some very long lead times with windows and curtain walls, so rather than just making this decision ourself, it does have an impact on how the building looks visually, I thought it would be appropriate to get your input. You know, at a minimum, I would probably suggest that we at least go with the yet-to-be-priced option, which would involve, you know, keeping the existing bronze frame, but painting the panels. I think that would certainly integrate the two sections of the building a little bit more, and that might be a good middle ground if the mayor and common council are uncomfortable with the cost of replacing the windows and the curtain wall.
Mr. President?
Right, and Mr. Mayor?
I asked for your, for the floor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cavaci, go ahead, I told the mayor.
So I, I like that word, Ms. Matthews, uncomfortable, because yes, I was uncomfortable. While, while, you know, I've made, I've made it clear many times that, you know, I'm constantly nervous about what we're spending here, but yeah, I think the idea of painting them is an excellent idea, because frankly, that in the renderings, that's mostly what it looks like, is we're mostly just changing the color of the casements and the panels and things like that. So if we can do that with paint versus the $75,000 to replace them, I'd say, let's go that route, because I have to believe that's significantly less expensive than that. That's my recommendation.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other thoughts?
Mr. President?
Ms. Gilbert?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Councilman Cavaci. I, I do not see spending $75,000 on a curtain wall, and I'd rather save some money and paint them.
Thank you. Mr. Deha?
I think the only intelligent question is, is that, is there any, is there, I mean, the one idea was to replace them? I mean, I'm not quite sure. I, I don't, we're going to have the, the building in perpetuity, I didn't know if there was any cost savings on HVAC or anything like that down the road. I looked at this item, and I was extremely uncomfortable about it. $76,000, we've, we've got a lot of things we can do with $76,000. We've been looking at this building for a long time, I'm not sure the windows have ever really bothered me.
Yeah, this is simply an aesthetic, an aesthetic, would be an aesthetic change.
No.
All right.
Do you need a motion?
I think.
I think the message is loud and clear.
Yeah.
I think Matthews has the instructions.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is not a discretionary item, this is, and thankfully, it is a, a very low dollar amount, so I can actually look at Councilmember Cavaci. This would be change order number five, which is for relocating certain electrical conduits discovered during demolition that will interfere with the proposed floor plans if not removed. This has a cost of $2,033.90.
I, I recommend that we do it, Mr. President, we don't really have a choice anyway, and it's a small dollar amount.
And I'll second it.
All right, we'll take that as a motion from Mr. Cavaci, and a second from Mr. Dehaugh to approve any further discussion. There is none, we want to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If they say nay, the ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the proposal is adopted. There you go, Ms. Matthews, anything else on that?
Yes, and then we have some items that we just wanted to get some feedback for. So these are items, once again, requested by the city, they are discretionary, for which Warner Construction has provided preliminary estimates, and these preliminary estimates were provided to assist the mayor and common council in making decisions regarding these items. Some of these items, depending on which ones you pick and how they're bundled, would be, have a cost higher than what is reflected in the staff memo, because of overhead and general condition costs and fees. The reason that these fees were omitted from the preliminary estimate is so as not to overly inflate the pricing. Depending on how many days these items would add to the job, the contractor contractually is entitled to certain general conditions costs, this is the cost of their superintendent having, you know, trailers and other facilities on site. If Warner had priced all these individually, as if they were not occurring simultaneously, it would overly inflate the cost. So basically, just walking through these very briefly, one is informal request for proposal number one, this would entail the milling and resurfacing of the existing parking lot. We also originally had asked for some sidewalk, cost for sidewalk reconstruction, we do not yet have that cost. So what is before you this evening is preliminary cost, once again, for milling and resurfacing the existing parking lot. The preliminary cost number is $36,192.45. Mr. Glass has reviewed this information, because one of my questions for him is, does he believe this is a reasonable cost, because this work could certainly also be done under the city's paving contract? Mr. Glass, you can please correct me if I misspeak, but I believe you felt like at first blush, this did appear to be a reasonable cost for the scope of the work involved. Is that correct, Mr. Glass?
That's correct. I checked it back with a few other parking lots that we've done recently, and was kind of surprised that, that actually was fairly reasonable. You know, we had to do some analysis, that it wasn't exactly the same, exactly the same size, and they include the, included the striping as well, which we generally would do that ourselves, but it's, it wasn't that bad.
Mr. Glass, this item, I believe, was requested from, by the Public Works Department. Are there any comments you'd like to share with the mayor and common council, just about your assessment of the existing pavement in the parking lot and the, the lining, the parking space lining?
So it's the kind of thing that, you know, nothing lasts forever. We don't last forever, as a matter of fact, so there's, there's going to be a time that it has to be done. I, I think the, the concept there was to, much like the, the windows, and I think you have some lighting to talk about as well, to spend that kind of money in a building and have it look like an old building from the outside, like there's no change, it would seem that for aesthetic purposes, that, that needs to be taken into consideration as well. The parking lot is really cracked up, you know, this is opportune time to do it, doesn't mean we have to do it right now, though.
Mr. Glass, while we're talking about the parking lot, do you also, you touched on it, do you also want to go ahead and talk about the lighting?
So my understanding of the lighting is, the concept is to replace the poles along with the, because they're, once again, they're dated structures, but, but to update the poles with LED fixtures as well. And I'm going by memory, but I'm pretty sure there are, there are three poles in a parking lot with, each have three lighting heads on, on each pole then as well, so. And again, I, it's my understanding that they want to change those out with, with current state-of-the-art LED fixtures.
Council President Pecorera, do you want us to continue walking through the items, since these are sort of preliminary cost estimates, or do you want to just talk about the parking lot initially?
Do you have any?
I'd rather do them individually. Mr. President, I'd rather do them individually.
Right, then that, we'll do, do it that way then. So any thoughts on the parking lot?
May I ask a question? Or you need a motion?
You? No, go ahead, go ahead and ask a question.
So, Mr. Glass, I mean, in the long run, we're going to save money if we do, if we do this repaving now, you feel that the parking lot is in such a shape that it would further deteriorate, and would be a capital maintenance instead of simply a maintenance?
I'm going to stop short to say that you'd save money by doing it now. I think that, I think that in time, it has to be done, you can either do it now, or you can do it next year. Either way, I think you're going to spend the same amount of money, though, that's, that's my opinion of it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
You know, I, I think, given the uncertainty of next year's budget, and frankly, I'd also love an opportunity for a local company to do the paving versus a company out of Frederick. I noticed that everything that's in, in these proposals all comes out of county, and I know that we've got some local companies that do this type of work for us on a pretty regular basis, at pretty reasonable numbers. My preference would be to go ahead and let Mr. Glass manage this, once the project's completed, they can get their trailers and all their stuff off of there, and then if we want to do it then, I'm, I'm sure he's more than capable of, of being on top of it, and making it happen either this year or next year. I'm not saying we shouldn't ever do it, but I, I don't know that we necessarily need this contractor to do it, especially if it's not really going to save us any money with him doing it now versus some other time. It's something we do, you know, the city does this day in and day out, this isn't something that we're not capable of doing ourself. Ourself meaning managing it and/or, in the case of lining it, even doing the lining, you know, with our own staff. That, that's my recommendation, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Day, so was that, well, that's a recommendation, but it's not a motion, because you can't, you can't preface a motion with debate, so.
If it's okay, we're just going to suggest that we just, like, just like the windows, let it die for lack of emotion.
Well, I think we should give, I mean, yeah, we can do that, but I think there ought to be some direction. Would somebody like to make a motion on how we'd like to proceed?
First?
Mr. Mayor?
So I, I mean, I get, I get where Councilman Cavaci's coming from on that. My only concern is that, you know, this is a very disruptive project, so if, if we wait, if we do it while everything is being built, it's not very disruptive. If, especially right now, that, you know, who knows how long downtown's going to be, you know, less, less populated during, during, during the pandemic, but more importantly, just the city offices, you know, we're going to, if we wait until it's occupied by our city staff, you're going to have a very loud, and, you know, I don't know if this will be done during the day or at night, I'm sure if it's done at night, it's going to cost us more, like all these projects do when, when it's at night, but if it's done during the day, so it's either going to cost us more if we do it at night, or if it's done during the day, it's going to be very disruptive with the people in there, we have staff that spend the majority of their day on, on phones. So to, to wait, I think we have to, we have to factor in all costs, so outside of just money, I think it will cost more down the road, just like any of these projects. I think that anything that's inevitable with this building, anything that's going to happen in the, in the near term, we should knock out while, while we're, you know, while the building's not occupied. That's, that's my opinion. I, you know, I see the other side of it, too, I just wanted to make sure everyone was factoring that in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Right, well, I don't generally weigh in on these things, but I'm going to say, I, I think I agree with the mayor, having listened to all this, I was, I was kind of agnostic about it going in, but, you know, I think that just moving this whole project along, and just getting it done and finished, to me, makes the most sense, and if it's cost neutral, I'd just as soon do that. I mean, I think that there are local contractors, yes, who could do this work, but they get, they get plenty of business from us, and I don't think that they're going to be hurting for a $35,000, $36,000 project, you know, so I'd just as soon keep all moving and get it done myself, but that's just my opinion. So we need a, we need a motion, would anybody care to make one?
Mr. President?
Mr. England?
I know these things came up so late, and I'm just kind of trying to, I don't really have an opinion about this strongly, but I kind of, I see, I see both sides. I think the disruption is, is a huge, a good point. You know, I, I'm kind of saying, though, also, like, I'm a big guy in infrastructure, you know, and I mean, parking lot is a piece of infrastructure, if it's deteriorating, I mean, actually, let me say to Mr. Glass, when you look at this parking lot, what is the life of the parking lot then? Because, you know, we talked about roads and how they deteriorate up to a certain percentage. Where are we at with this parking lot, Mr. Glass?
So I'd think probably within the next, within the next two or three years, the work should be done by that time. I think we, it could be deferred by that time, but, again, it certainly could be done now, but it could be deferred as well. But I'd say beyond three years, probably, we shouldn't go beyond three, although we have roads that have gone much further than that, so.
So follow-up, follow-up question, then, the parking lot and the lights, so if the lights have to be replaced, then it makes sense to do the lights in the parking lot, I guess, at the same time, or no?
So the lights will be dependent upon the, matching the base of the new structure to the base of the existing structure, so they could be done independently, the lights really might not be that big of a deal to, to change out, if the bases work out.
Mr. President?
Mr. Deha?
I'd rather, I'd rather take up the repaving of the parking lot and the lights as separate issues, if that's okay with you.
Certainly.
Okay.
So, on the, on the question of, Ms. Gilbert?
Um, I, I have a question, I know we're only on change order number five, how has the total cost changed, increased, or I doubt it's, I doubt it's decreased, but how has everything total increased so far in the grand scheme of things?
That's a good question.
It, it's reflected on the change orders today, we've only had change orders, there's been two of them that combined total $43,703.19.
So the other change orders have been decreased?
There were two that were decreases, and one that was a deduct, so I'm drawing a blank on the first one, I apologize for that, that you all passed, but change order number two was passed at your last meeting, that encompassed, which was the majority of this amount, it had to do with non-discretionary changes because of information obtained from BGE after the contract had already been awarded. There was a door deduct on change order two as well, and then my recollection, Councilmember Gilbert, in response to your question, is that change order one had to do with a structural column and an issue that was detected during demolition, and the combined of all three items was a net of $43,703.19 on a $4.4 million project.
Okay, and, and if, Mr. Glass, you feel as though this parking lot is going to need to be repaved or dug up, whichever that necessarily, it sounds like it's going to need to be dug up and then, and then resurfaced again at $36,000 now, wouldn't that cost increase in three years, not decrease? So wouldn't we, in essence, save money doing it now than waiting two or three years? And my question is, this doesn't include the sidewalk, so that's a whole nother estimate? Is that correct?
So it's my understanding the sidewalk price didn't come in, so I'd have to defer to Ms. Matthews on that one, but I don't think we have that cost, the.
That is, Mr. Glass, you're correct.
So one good thing about doing the, the paving now is that the advantage that we have for asphalt price, the petroleum market, actually, just the other day, was a negative value, believe it or not, for a little while, so you're not going to get pavement this cheap very likely for a long time, I, I look for that to change. It may not, but I, I think it's, in all likelihood, it will.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Whoever wants to answer this, whoever's more, better equipped to, Mr. Glass or Ms. Matthews, but as of right now, the way it's proposed, this would be handled by our general contractor that we currently have. If we waited and we did it on our own, what's, what's, what's the estimated, I know this is kind of a guess, hopefully not a wild guess, but what's the estimated, like, staff time and resources that would go into handling this as opposed to going through a general contractor?
I defer to Mr. Glass, he would certainly be much more aware of what the responsibilities would be for his staff if we managed this work ourselves. Part of it would obviously be, on the paving, it would be part of our general bidding, but I imagine on the lighting, we would need to develop bid specs and issue those. Mr. Glass, you know a lot more about this than I do.
Certainly, if we included in the annual paving project, it would, it would probably be, I would say, four days of work. be, I would say, four days of work, something along those lines. It would, it would be very seamless if we included with the rest of our paving. With regard to the lights, I'm not sure that, that that amount is gonna rise to bidding, probably could just get three prices for that, would be my guess. If I'm not mistaken, it was $12,000, I believe, was it?
The lighting, Mr. Glass, was estimated, the actual lights, of $20,219.85, and GBA had estimated some engineering fees of approximately $6,000. So it was a total potential cost, not all through Warner, of just over $26,000, because, in part, because of the engineering fees.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
I still think I'd rather have, I'd rather get a quote from a local contractor. I mean, if, not to bring up, if we were bonding it out and paying it back in future discounted dollars, I would say do it now. But I, I think I'd rather, I'd rather do it as part of our, our annual repaving contract in the future, or I would rather get a price from a local contractor. The only caveat is, is that it's a very compelling argument. I mean, the price of gas, I've, I've never seen the price of gas go blue zero before, and that's, that's what it did. I mean, petroleum, they have no place to store it these days. The price is so low, and they can't give the stuff away. So that, that, that's a counterbalance. I think, and I think, I think even if we wanted to have a contractor do it this, this year, I think I'd rather have a local contractor take a look at it. I'm not, I'm not really crazy about doing it now.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
I know there's a lot of focus on using local contractors, and I get it. I think we should always support local business whenever we can, whenever, whenever we can do it without it costing the taxpayers more. But I think that, the more that I think about this, when you add up the staff time, which is the cost to taxpayers, there's something else we're not doing in that regard, the cost of petroleum, which I didn't even think about, thank you for that, Mr. Glass, and, you know, if it happens during the, you know, the time when the building's occupied, that could have adverse effects on staff and, again, costs. So I just, I just think that it's, it's, it's always good when we can use a local, the more local the business, if you can, if it's someone in the city, that's best. If it's someone in the county, that's next best. If it's someone, you know, in the state, that that's next best, whenever we can. But I don't think we should do it, I, I think that our number one priority should always be, what's the best deal, what's the best value for the residents and the taxes that they pay into the city, and that they trust us to spend wisely. And I just, I just think that, at first, I was kind of on the fence on this, and I didn't really, I didn't really strongly lean either way, but the more, you know, small things kind of pile up, it just sounds, it just sounds like to me it's best to do it now. And I'm done talking about it, I just wanted to say that last piece, the more I hear everyone talk about it, the more I'm convinced it's time to do it. But that's, you know, it's up to, up to the council to vote for that. I just wanted to make sure that, that I was heard. I'll sign off on whatever they decide.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a recommendation from the staff, but we as yet have no motion on what to do. Does anybody care to offer a motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Yingling?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the parking lot due to the cost of asphalt, the staff time associated with, if we do it on our own, the disruption it will cause. And then I never thought about this, but if you have a deteriorating parking lot, you have a safety issue, safety to our employees, and then safety to the public who might be crossing that parking lot. I think we should do it now. I'll make a motion.
All right, is there a second to Mr. Yingling's motion?
I'll make a second.
All right, so it's been moved by Mr. Yingling and submitted by Ms. Gilbert to move forward with the staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion than this? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
No.
All right, and the chair votes aye, so in the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. The ayes have it. And we'll move on. Ms. Matthews, anything else?
Just the parking lot lighting, and then there were two other tentative items. I think you all have discussed the lighting.
Yeah, so do we, so what, please remind us, what's the recommendation on the lighting now, since we've been off topic for, off that topic for a while?
Basically, the proposal that is before you this evening would replace some of the parking light fixtures and the bases as described by Mr. Glass. And the cost is, with engineering fees, which would be more of a GBA cost, in total would be about $26,219.85. Once again, this is preliminary numbers, but.
And why do we want to replace the current lights?
Mr. Glass, I believe some of this item came from DPW, but I think some of the bases are crumbling. I think there's, some of it is that the infrastructure's not in good condition, but I also think there are some where things don't match, and there's the opportunity to use LED. Mr. Glass, is that your recollection as well?
That's correct.
So is there any discussion, or is there a motion on the lights?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
If, if I may, Mr. Glass, I mean, what's, what's the longevity, what's the life expectancy of the current light fixtures?
I don't think there's any question of how long they're gonna last. I think they'll last as long as we maintain them, but, you mean with the crumbling bases? Is that, that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, gosh, good question. I, I really don't have a good answer to that. You know, again, I, I'd say probably in the two or three-year range, maybe. It's, that's, depends upon the windstorm, probably.
Mr. Glass, this item is probably not as time-sensitive. Would you, would you like the opportunity to look at it more closely, or just wanted to extend that, since I don't know that the mayor and common council have to make a decision on this item this evening?
I think that's probably a good idea.
Is that, is that acceptable to you, Council President? Okay.
That's fine. Do you have anything else?
The two other items, one is a referred to as IRFP for, these are masonry air shaft walls. If you recall ever going in the rear of the building when it was operating as a bank, this would have been right next to where the FedEx and, I think it was a UPS boxwork. There's an air shaft at that rear of the building. It has eight-foot-tall glazed brick walls surrounding the air shaft. That glazed brick wall, they are beginning to crack. What this RFP provides for is demolition of the existing glazed brick air shaft and walls, and that would be replaced with a louvered mechanical screen fence. That would be more economical. The preliminary cost for this item is $13,516.65. Once again, this is a discretionary item, which is why we're bringing it before you.
And if we don't have anything to do?
You're gonna have just, you know, like I say, it is starting to, the wall is starting to crack. So at some point, work would need to be done. You know, I don't know that staff can tell you how long that's gonna be, but the thought is, while you have a contractor on site, you know, these are eight-foot-tall glazed brick walls. I don't know, Mr. Glass can certainly answer this, whether this is something we would have the capability of knocking down ourselves or not. I'll defer to his judgment on that.
I think we could do the demo if, if that's, that's the direction. It would make, my opinion, I think it would be better for the contractor to do that, but I'd say we certainly could.
All right, thank you. Any thoughts from the council, or comments, or questions, or is there a motion?
Mr. Glass, Mr. Peccararo, Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
The, the reason the wall is as tall as it is is because when they originally built the building, it was a low wall for the air handling, and automobile fumes from the parking lot were entering into the air handling system by way of that shaft, and that's why they built it up the way it did. So I, I guess the one question is, is, are the folks that are suggesting that we replace it aware of that dynamic? And is this going to take care of the automobile fumes entering into that air shaft and entering into the air, air handling system? And I guess maybe that's a question for, for, for Mr. Glass.
I'm not sure that the architect knows that bit of information. I would guess probably not.
Yeah, my suggestion, I would suggest we defer the item, so we can share that information.
I would like to get that, I would like for the architect and I would like for the contractor to be aware of why that, of why that shaft is there and why it is, is as tall as it was. It was an afterthought, but you would walk in the building and it smelled like automobile fumes. It wasn't good.
No, I thank you, Councilmember Dayhoff. You always have a wealth of information, especially historical information, so we will share that with the contractor and the project architect and bring this item back to you.
All right.
The, the last item, I think in the interest of time, Council President Peccararo, it was just basically washing the building exterior to get all the grime off of it. That can certainly wait to the next meeting when we bring these items back, if you would like, just in deference to the lateness of the hour.
Sure, let's do that.
If you would prefer. Okay. Thank you all for your time on this item.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matthews. So we will now move on to, so I think that was the last item?
Yes, it was.
Last item on the agenda, we'll now move on to departmental reports. Would you like to start us off, Ms. Matthews?
Yes, thank you, and I will try to be brief. We did have the last biweekly project progress meeting on the 45 West Main Project on Tuesday, April 21st. Warner Construction shared with the group that they, during weeks when the county inspections are scheduled to be performed, they are moving to four 10-hour days. This is to accommodate the restrictions put in place by the county stipulating that the building must be vacant for 24 hours prior to any county staff member inspection. Also effective, April 22nd, Warner has implemented a new safety policy requiring all visitors to wear a face mask while they're on site, as well as their own staff. Regarding the stock-stated redevelopment, I mentioned at our last meeting on April 14th that the COVID-19 pandemic has shifted market conditions and future development potentials significantly. Partners for Economic Solutions, which is our consultant providing technical assistance, reported to the city that their initial outreach to the development community indicated an unwillingness to take on new opportunities right now, given all the uncertainty and financial strife. PES therefore recommended that we delay our developer solicitation until the markets have had a chance to recover. I did discuss this matter with the Economic Development Committee, and they, the committee did agree with PES's recommendation to pause the other task options that are in Phase One. Their concern was that the city would spend money currently for very little return. So with the consultation and guidance and direction from the Economic Development Committee, we have put future steps of PES's work on hold. I did check with the firm earlier today on the status of the preliminary site characterization report that I mentioned on April 14th. That was to be uploaded to the FTP site last week, and PES reported that they're doing some refinement to the models and the numbers. So I'll keep you posted and let you all know when that report has been uploaded to the FTP site. With that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Dayhoff to provide the report on behalf of the Fire Department.
The Fire Department remains very busy, and personal protection equipment continues to be a concern, but so far, we're, we're maintaining. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go alphabetically. I did want to share with you all, our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Childs, is under the weather this evening, so unfortunately, she was not able to remain on the call the entire time. Next up will be our Director of Community Planning and Development, Mr. Depot.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Tuesday, May 5th meeting, is still scheduled to hear the Valvoline Service Station special exception. We had in the, we had the ability to speak with the applicant to address Councilmember Kabachi's issues or concerns with access. We two share the same concern. They will have a traffic engineer at the meeting, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, to address some of those concerns as far as access and how the business operates and how vehicles even enter the site. On Wednesday, May 6th, the HTC will hold its meeting for, one, a historic tax credit application. Intuitively, we may go over the rules of procedure for tax credits and the rules of procedure for the historic district commission as a whole. I'm stating "intuitively" because we're still working on aspects of that and may not be ready for the meeting. On Thursday, May 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting hearing, we will hear the Mission BBQ site plan. We were able to, again, meet with the applicant, talk about the outdoor seating, which was the concern from the last month, as to why that was, why it was pushed, and water allocation, and we believe we have a plan for that. We're just waiting for some additional information from the applicant. Also, Big Lot signage is scheduled. The site development plan for Oriole Farms is scheduled. We are still having some concerns with that as far as traffic and access to the site and Route 97 widening, potential widening in the future, but we do have a meeting scheduled with the applicant to go over some of those concerns tomorrow. Site development plan for Family and Children's Services is scheduled. We are having concerns with parking for that site. We did have a meeting with the applicant today, and we believe we've addressed that concern, so they should be ready for the planning commission as well. And I believe the county will be presenting the annual report as well. And that covers my, covers what's happening.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Mr. Glass?
No report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Ledwell?
Sure, so we're continuing to follow the safety protocol in line with CDC guidelines. We are responding to various complaints related to executive order violations, everything from complaints on businesses not being essential, to reports of individuals not wearing masks in the stores, to gatherings of people over 10 and individuals inside a restricted area of city parks. We haven't had to take any enforcement action, fortunately, related to any of these executive order calls for service. We continue to do our site checks of food distribution in the medical respite site. Our call volume remains below average. We're seeing mostly domestic disputes and assaults, disorderly conduct calls, and some emergency petitions for suicidal individuals. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Assistant Recreation Director, Ms. Mullendor?
Good evening. I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mullendor. Our Director of Finance and Administrative Services, Ms. Palmer?
Good evening again. I did send out to all of you the audited financial reports for fiscal year ending 2019. With your permission, I would like to add to the May 11th agenda a presentation of those reports by Ms. Wanda Lynn, CPA of Brown, Schultz, Sheridan, and Fritz, the auditing firm. I understand that you will have questions and concerns. If you'd like to submit those questions to me prior to the meeting, I can be prepared to answer those for you during the meeting. I would like to add that this was a very detailed and specific audit in their testing by Brown, Schultz, Sheridan, and Fritz, and so we welcome that. We enjoy seeing the findings that we got, so that we can improve our reporting and our transparency, and anything that you have to add to that, we welcome. So I look forward to having a discussion about that on May 11th. Are there any questions? That's all I have, Ms. Matthews.
All right, Council President Peccararo, is Ms. Palmer free to try to arrange that presentation by the auditing firm for May 11th?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to confirm that and not be presumptuous. And last but certainly not least?
We could have a budget that night, I guess we'll have time.
We should. I mean, I can certainly sketch out the tentative agenda, Council President, and send. I mean, I can certainly sketch out the tentative agenda, Council President, and send that to you and the mayor, if you would like, just to know how it's shaping up.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we will do that. And then, Ms. Valanciase, our Director of Housing Services?
Good evening. I just want to report to you that we are managing with all the restrictions and modifications. We're still proceeding with leasing. Housing choice vouchers up. I'm doing virtual inspections as well as, if a unit is empty, I've gone and done inspections to help facilitate getting people leased up during this time period. And we are still processing rental housing license applications and still working on code enforcement. But we're all managing and trying to adjust to the modifications that we need to do. That's everything.
Thank you, Ms. Valanciase. And I think that concludes staff reports unless there's any questions from the mayor and common council.
Any questions for Ms. Matthews or anyone else on the staff? Right, then thank you all very much for those reports. It is, it would now be the time, if we were meeting in person, when we would invite the public joining us at the meeting for citizen comments. Since our mastery of virtual meetings is not extended to inviting comments, you know, as part of the live stream, what we would ask is that anybody who has comments for the city, please submit them to the city clerk. And you can email her at S V I S O C S K Y at westgov.com. I'll repeat that. And I think we'll put her on the screen here as well. S V I S O C S K Y at westgov, westgov.com. I know it's at the bottom of the agenda. If we can scroll to that. It's at the bottom of the second page. If you grab the bar, it'd probably be easier. And so with that, unless, anybody has anything else?
Oh, remember, Mr. Wagner had a comment?
I'm sorry, I had one comment I was supposed to read. I apologize. And I have a comment from, it was emailed to us from Mr. Kevin Wagner of one fifty-three East Green Street. And he says, "I wanted to thank the Street Department men and women for their dedication for making our city so beautiful looking. About the yard waste and tree limbs, feel if we keep doing it, it helps the city residents to upkeep their property. The comments that are negative on Facebook, like taking all the lawn bags to City Hall or the one about burning them, are very negative for our society in town. I feel most never think about that. Wanted the council and mayor and staff to know, many are very proud of the city and all they are doing in this event. This is not any effort in running for city office. It's just speaking from my heart. Never would want your jobs, even though I am grateful for what you do. Good night and be safe." And thank you, Mr. Wagner. We missed seeing you at the council meeting. And so with that, we will say to everybody, be safe and stay healthy, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.